Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello. I'm Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the December 8th, 2021 Board Meeting. To comply with the recent SEC mandates, we ask everyone to please wear a mask. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 6:30. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the Board. I would remind us all to silence our cellphones and other devices around that the microphone may pick up. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for November 10th, 2021.
Approval of agenda?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Here, look, this is it for me. I am so happy. You all have no idea. Yes, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey Pass and seconded by?
Second.
By Ms. Bataglia. Questions, comments? I'll call for the vote.
I'm sorry, Ms. Herbert, can I ask one?
Sure, absolutely.
I don't think it's a change, I just wanted to double check. So, in item 8I, it says it's the approval for Hampstead Elementary School, but in the document, in some parts of the document that we received, it says Manchester. So I just wanted to make sure that it was actually for Hampstead.
Supposed to be Hampstead.
It's supposed to be Hampstead. Okay, so the agenda item is appropriately named.
Is correct, right, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for November 10th, 2021.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny and seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Bataglia. Comments, questions, corrections? Ms. Savigny?
I do have a question on page 16, where it's talking about the Capitol Improvement Plan Amendment. There's a statement at the very bottom of the page that says, "Under the traditional CIP process, we believe there was an additional 606,000 of eligible funds, more than our proportionate share." But I don't recall that number ever getting mentioned, and the change was 3.4 million. So I think that's the number that we should be documenting, right? Not the, not whatever that $606,000 was.
Right. John might address that, but I think that's right. That amount, that amount does add up to the whole. So there were, there were different portions that the state ultimately included, and one portion was that, that 600 and some thousand of eligibility under the traditional CIP.
Okay.
Does that, you want me to kind of break it down again?
I, I think, but if that was just one portion of it, like, I think what we, didn't we approve the 3.4 million?
You approved the whole sum, yes.
Okay.
There were pieces that added up to that number that we briefly touched on, but you approved the whole sum as part of the CIP adjustment.
Okay, so, so could we adjust the minutes then to say, instead of this last sentence under the traditional CIP process, just say that the final net amount of the change was 3 point, or $3,469,000?
Sure.
Okay.
Are you okay if, I'm sorry. The 606 may be correct for eligible funds, and then it talks about, "In addition, blah, blah, blah." Do you want to just add a sentence to the end of the paragraph that says the total is? Does that make it?
Okay, with all pieces considered, the to, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so with all pieces considered, the total is $3,469,000. Okay.
Any other corrections? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, and now we would like to have the Carroll County Student Government Report.
Jamie is unfortunately not here today, so I'll be giving the report.
Oh, that's fine, that's great, thank you.
Good evening, Board members. CCSJ has been working very hard this past month to prepare for December and the upcoming elections that are not as far away as they seem. My Vice President Nikki Zhang and I recently sent out a presentation to the middle and high school SGAs informing them of what CCSJ is in order to introduce the students to our association that may not have had stable SGAs in years past due to COVID-19. Lengthy information about the position of SROB was included so that our students are aware of this important position and their impact as student leaders. Along with this, CCSJ has opted to sending, sending out a video to individual school SGAs due to restrictions on in-person general assemblies this year. It contains information about the service project that CCSJ normally does countywide in December, as well as election information. We decided that school SGAs will be able to choose what kind of service project they take on for the month of December. Schools will be able to decide between donating to a clothing drive, a supply closet for CCPS students, cards for nursing homes, blankets, and more. The point of this is to just have the county help out the community in a united manner, even if we cannot be in person together. As many of you know, in February, we will be holding elections for the Student Representative on the Board of Education-elect. SROB applications have been sent out to school SGAs and will be resent out twice more in order to ensure that our current and interested 9th and 10th graders have been able to receive an application. These applications are due February 11th. We also included information about how we still have open applications for the position of CCSJ Second Vice President. These applications will be due January 7th. If there are any questions or concerns about election information or the December General Assembly, Mr. Melhorns, Devanchis, and my emails are always open. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Devanchi, and I have a statement to make before we do the election of the officers. As you may be aware, Dr. Lockhart has announced that he will not be seeking a second term as Superintendent. We were saddened to learn the decision and feel it is a great loss for our school system. Dr. Lockhart has served us well over the last four years and has led the school system through some of the most difficult times we have ever faced. Dr. Lockhart came to us as a Superintendent with strong vision, bringing new initiatives and programs to our school system. Although we could never predict the arrival of COVID and the difficult challenges it has posed, Dr. Lockhart has done an incredible job leading us through the pandemic. Thanks to his efforts, Carroll County Public Schools has led the state in bringing students back into, into the classrooms, and it wasn't easy. Dr. Lockhart, you will be greatly missed when you leave us. However, we are glad that you will be with us for a while longer, and we won't have to say goodbye yet. The Board of Education has begun the process of searching for a new Superintendent. We will be providing updates to the community as we move through the process, and we will start this evening. Thank you, Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert.
And now, I hand the gavel over to Dr. Lockhart. He's in charge.
All right, meeting in charge. Just, I couldn't help myself.
I don't blame you.
Next on the agenda is the election of officers. We do that every December. So I declare the office of the President of the Board of Education of Carroll County vacant and ask the Board for nominations for this office. Ms. Herbert?
Dr. Lockhart, I would like to nominate Kenneth Kyler for President of the Carroll County Board of Education.
Okay, we'll have a second.
I will second.
Any other nominations? Okay, if no further nominations, all those in favor of Mr. Kyler as President of the Board of Education, please indicate by raising your hand, saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Kyler.
Thank you.
One more minute.
So he gets to do this one?
Yes, yeah, we're going to get this, this will be you, and then we'll switch after this.
Okay.
You got it? We're still following you.
I declare, I declare the office of the Vice President of the Board of Education of Carroll County vacant and ask for a nomination for this office. Ms. Savigny?
I would like to nominate Ms. Tyra Bataglia.
Is there a second? I will second it. Is there any other nominations? Then nominations are closed. Could we have a show of hands in favor of Tyra Bataglia becoming the Vice President of the Board of Education? Congratulations. Now we move.
You go over one, and Tyra comes over here.
Is Tyra coming here?
Yes, Tyra comes there, and she'll, she'll be doing this.
Do we need to move our little name badges too?
Yeah.
Yes.
And while we're moving, I want to thank the Board, and I've said this numerous times, but I want to thank all four ladies that I work with and the Superintendent. I've said it before, I've been on a number of boards, this is by far the best one I've been on as far as a group that works together and hopefully gets things done. Now, are you ready for the, to read? Next on the agenda is public comments.
All right, so please bear with me, because for three years I haven't had to look at this document, so I've never had to read it before, so it's my first time, so.
One more has to go on the bottom.
One more. To have an orally presentation to comment by the public, the following guidelines apply. Citizens will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The Superintendent Board reserves the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Citizens to the Board, statements to the Board of Education, to the Board related to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions and statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 and 6:30. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes has passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the Speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for the Board members on the table at the back of the Board meeting at the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comment in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. And we have 22 speakers. First speaker, Katie Hayman?
Hayman.
Hayman?
Yeah. Okay. Hello, my name is Katie Hayman. I am a 3rd grader in CCPS. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. On November, this, I believe it was the 16th, I was provided the opportunity to speak during the citizen comment section of the MSD meeting. During that meeting, I voiced a support of unmasking children and creating off-ramps beginning in January, citing infinitesimal pediatric hospitalizations in Maryland. As of yesterday, there were actually six out of 1.3 million children. Availability of vaccines for those that are five and over that want them, and multiple treatment options available for COVID-19. I voiced a suggestion to begin the test-to-stay program statewide to minimize quarantines when masking is lifted. However, after yesterday's MSD meeting, I didn't know if I should scream into a pillow or start crying. Reading the regulation states, "If approved, as a standard regulation, the regulation expires on its own terms, June 30th, 2023." If I read that correctly, to put that into perspective, my son started virtual school in 1st grade. If it continues the way it is, then he wouldn't actually have a typical year until the first day of 5th grade. Not to mention how anxiety-provoking it would be to be back and forth if we went through with the four-day rolling infection rate. This isn't sustainable until potentially June 2023. I've been speaking with other parents from across the state, and I actually feel privileged to live in Carroll County, where our Board of Education has used critical thinking, not emotion, to guide their policies. Regardless of whether I agree or not, I respect each and every one of you sitting on that Board for your endurance throughout this, whoops, throughout this pandemic, and appreciate all of what you do. So, day day, I come begging. I come begging that you do something. I come begging and pleading that there is something that you can do as a county to stop this madness. In Carroll County, my body, my choice, is alive and well, and trying to equate, or trying to equate unmasking, or relate unmasking to a vaccination percentage that we haven't been able to reach yet this date is not attainable nor appropriate. The prospects for meeting clear herd immunity vaccine percentage is very complicated, per Dr. Jefferson Jones, a medical officer on the CDC's COVID-19 Epidemiology Task Force. I know that you can't respond to me, so to the legal counsel, can you please find something in those big fancy law books to fix this? From one parent to another, please help. I hope you all have a happy holidays.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Belinda Lawson.
Good afternoon. My name is Belinda Lawson, and I am the founder of the Moms Group of Carroll County, which has around 3,500 members. Back on October 13th, I made a poll to see how many parents or mothers would be vaccinating their children if this does ever become mandatory in our school system. I know I sent you all the information previously, but I did want to make this public. Out of 330, 313 people that participated in this particular poll, 263 moms answered no. They will not have their children vaccinated. Only 50 moms answered yes. Eighty-four percent of the moms that participated in this poll will not have their children vaccinated. Most of these mothers in this group have an average of two to four children. I know you listen to the community, and I think it's important to hear them when they speak. No, these kids have, no, these kids, not all, are not all the voices in the community, but when these voices, but these voices should still be heard. I know you don't all agree on mandatory vaccinations, however, we've gotten to the point where the state of Maryland is overriding any decision that you have. At some point, I know most of you are most likely thinking, what is the point of being a Board member if there's no way that we can protect these children from the dangerous decisions that the state is making? I'm here asking you on behalf of so many other moms to please try your best to come up with solutions to help these mothers protect their children from the power that is out of their control. At some point, all of the private schools in this county and the area will become overwhelmed, and unfortunately, at some point, the decisions made at the state level will begin to affect the private sector as well. This is not just a public school issue. This is not just a community issue. This is a group of individuals on a state board that has hijacked the entire state for nefarious reasons that we all know about. This is about money. Our children have been turned into cattle. This is not a laughing matter. This has become more than just a concern. These are our children's lives. Their health is the very thing that we are trying to protect. Please do everything you can to stop this egregious abuse of power. Otherwise, what is the reason for having a local state aboard? This is the last thing that parents were waiting on, to decide whether or not they wanted to have their children remain in the school system, and now we've heard from the state. I've already started hearing from parents and teachers about how they will be withdrawing their children and leaving the school system. Please tell us why we should vote in the next Board of Elections. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker is Jo, I'm sorry, Seka?
Seska.
Seska.
This entire push for critical race theory in schools is predicated upon one thing, economic disparities between white and black people, and that this is a product of our racist past. However, this is not the root cause of this disparity. Asian people in this country too have faced severe discrimination, yet we do not see a negative disparity between Asians and whites. Instead, we see the opposite. Further, for the last 60 years, black people in this country have enjoyed special privileges to include jobs, loans, grants, education, housing, welfare. They've had all these advantages, but we still see a negative disparity. So why is this? It's not that our black citizens are incapable, it's that this destructive policy of keeping the welfare state upon our black communities hurts them. We see the same issue with the COVID-19 unemployment benefits. Given the opposite, a significant group of people would rather take the lesser pain handout than seek better opportunities elsewhere. This skews economic metrics downward and causes the negative disparity we see. It is not tyranny of the majority, but the tyranny of good intentions which has caused this disparity. Smothering people with assistance is just as bad as negligence. No one can deny this point any longer, and our black communities can no longer suffer it. It is racist to continue to treat our black citizens like a charity case and pity them out of white guilt or white savior complex. If our black communities are to recover and more equal outcomes are to be achieved, the 60-year hell of Democrat policy and its offshoots must be abandoned. This includes critical race theory or equity doctrine. This equity doctrine is really the communist template, i.e. the class struggle narrative repackage to utilize race instead of economics. The victim class, the proletariat is replaced with minorities, and the oppressor class, the capitalists, is replaced with white people. It is hard to discern for many because there are legitimate grievances by the victim class, but the difference is in the language and the objectives. The Civil Rights Movement fought to have our law balanced between white and black people. This new CRT or equity doctrine says that any difference between the races is a result of malfeasance, in this case racism, and nothing else, and that the institutional systems of power which are alleged to exist to hold down the victim must be overthrown to obtain justice. This all sounds good until you look at the things that equity doctrine says. Equity says that white people are evil and have, and have to take a knee so black and other minorities can have a turn of power. The Civil Rights Movement said that we can share power concurrently in harmony. Equity is just reverse racism and ignores the fact that current economic disparities between white and black people are a direct result of the last 60 years of Democratic economic policies targeted at our black communities. If you can believe that the war on drugs was meant to hurt black people, you can believe that the war on poverty is too. No one here who supports CRT or equity doctrine is supporting the Civil Rights Movement. That work has already been done. You're not making things fairer, more equal, or more balanced. You're not doing any of these things. You're participating in a communist-style overthrow of this country, guys under a racial narrative instead of economic. What remains to achieve equal outcomes is to free our black communities from the destructive welfare state that has resulted in worse outcomes than before its implementation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the staff tables are for staff only, and of course, the seats are for public coming to, to observe the meeting, and we ask that everybody honor that.
All right, our next speaker is Caitlin Edmanson.
I want to say thank you to the concerned parents of Carroll County. I'm so thankful for all the hard work, and for bringing such amazing parents together in this group. I also want to thank the Board members. I want you to know how much we appreciate the hard work that you are doing. Thank you, Ms. Herbert, for speaking at the virtual state meeting a few weeks ago, and thank you for standing up for our county.
Excuse me, you need to put on your mask.
Okay. I can't read my glasses on, but okay. Dr. McBride from Johns Hopkins made a very good point that the state virtual meeting that was brought up, that she brought up the fact that in no world will you ever be able to have 100% of children receive the COVID shot. She made a good point that once everyone has had the opportunity to inject their children with the COVID shot, at that point, that masks need to end. Dr. McBride brought up the fact that there has been zero research on the harmful effects of masking children for a long period of time, and there are many. The U.S. Surgeon General has just warned, has just warned about the alarming mental health crisis that is affecting our youth right now. Dr. McBride also referenced data that proves there is no proof that masking cuts down on the transmission at all. I could make many points to this argument, but there is no data or graph that will ever compare to the intrinsic knowledge and rights that a mother or father have of raising their I was born and raised here in Carroll County. I went to Spring Garden Elementary, North Carroll Middle, and North Carroll High School. I had Ms. Herbert as a teacher, and I thank you again for helping to mold me into the person that I am today. I refuse to watch this amazing county, this home that I've known my entire life, get turned into something scandalous or inherently flawed because of certain opinions. When I come here fired up, I don't want you to think that I'm just directing this anger at you. My intention is to ignite the fire that sustains you and drives you forward in this fight. We are not going away. We have seen and heard enough now, and our passion far outweighs that of the other side. I want my children to breathe fresh air. I want my children to grow up brave and not live in fear of things that they cannot control. I do not want my children to be indoctrinated, and I do not want my children to see people through the lens of race. I want my children to be kind, to give grace to all, and to judge others on the content of their character, and then, even then, to still give grace. God bless everyone in this room, and God bless this country. Thank you.
Janelle Hafer.
Janelle, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Good evening, Board. I have been fighting this mask mandate from the very beginning. Recently, my daughter was out of school for 10 days, two whole weeks. I started out with her coming home with a sinus infection on the Friday, or on a Friday afternoon, which overnight turned into bronchitis then pneumonia. Thank you, mask mandates, for giving my daughter bronchitis and pneumonia, which, by the way, she has never had before. As if her coming home every day from school with at least a headache, if not a migraine, isn't bad enough. Oh, and let me not forget, she was unnecessarily quarantined for five to six days the end of September through the beginning of October. These days are adding up at a rapid pace. My daughter has never missed this much school, ever. It includes taking a week off for Disney for two different years, not even when she broke her tibula and fibula at opposite ends of her lower leg and had a cast on up to her hip. My straight A honors students had better not be held back because she was forced to quarantine and physically cannot attend school because of these mask mandates, which are, by the way, not law. Our beloved NP didn't want her going back to school until she was completely symptom-free. Even if she wasn't contagious, one day in a mask will set her back immediately if she has gone back with the smallest of symptoms. So please tell me, exactly what am I supposed to do here? My child's health comes first. It is not fair that she gets punished for her getting sick. These ridiculous Petri dishes, face diapers that our children are forced to wear seven plus hours a day is what caused my daughter's illness, which has been proven in many studies that I have forwarded you, the Carroll County Board, the State Board, and even during the AELR meetings. They are also what prevented her from going back to school in a timely manner. The school was very understanding and agreed she shouldn't come back and risk a major setback due to wearing masks. During my daughter's illness, I spoke with the school office four, at least four times. I also emailed the principal a couple of times, giving her status updates. I personally emailed each individual teacher two to three times, asking for all of her missed work. Her teachers were giving her very little to do, if anything at all, on Google Classroom for her honors classes. Her teachers were giving her very little to do, if anything at all, on Google Classroom for her honors classes. She went onto Google Classroom at least twice a day, mostly three times a day, checking to see what teachers were posting for her. Every morning and afternoon, she logged on to see if any news, anything new was posted. She completed all the posted work that she was able to complete as soon as she received it. There were quite a few occasions she couldn't get an assignment from a teacher, and they would tell her that she needed to use notes or a handout that the teacher had handed out during class to complete the work.
Please finish your thought.
All of which were my daughter didn't have to complete the work. We've got to do something about this. There's got to be a better way.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Kate Martin.
You got it right. Good evening, board members. Thank you again for allowing me to come and speak. I have listened to the state board meeting on two occasions and have seen firsthand how they completely ignore the facts and the data that doesn't fit their narrative. We're coming up on two years of this COVID mess, and it's time to move on. For every argument there is to enforce a mask, there's an equal argument against the mask. What I'm trying to figure out is why our legal counsel is hesitant or unwilling to challenge the state decisions to keep the mask mandate intact. Is there a conflict of interest that our community is unaware of with our legal counsel on the state board? Can we hire new legal counsel and challenge the state? What more do we need to do to fight back? Dr. Dorsey, your words stating that the board members are agents of the state really bother me. Does that mean that we, the people, we vote for you, and you put the state in their... I'm sorry. Does that mean that the people vote for you, but your best interest and support is for the state? What about being an agent for the people? During one of the state board meetings, we heard from an agent of the state who spoke on her belief of how these COVID mandates should be upheld and was challenged by another individual about her views being her own and not of her community's. She stumbled on her words, and you knew where she stood. Marcia, at the state board meeting back in September, you questioned Superintendent Chaudry on who was going to enforce the mandate. He never had a reasonable response. Why are we making our teachers and administrators take on this role? Studies have shown that significant loss of learning in our children. So wouldn't the teacher's time be better spent on providing the students with rigorous learning opportunities instead of focusing on little Johnny wearing his mask the correct way? Mr. Chaudry and the state board had their minds made up prior to the meetings that were held. They're all directing you to hold the teachers and administrators responsible and enforce this ridiculous mandate. I keep hearing that we're understaffed and in desperate need of teachers, yet we're requiring them to go beyond their job description and be the mask police. I do applaud Carroll County Board for being leaders in the fight. We must continue to do so and focus on the best interest for what really matters here, the children. We have a long road ahead, and I have faith in you guys. I have faith in our teachers and the students. We are in this together, so let's focus on the priority, catching these kids up from loss of learning over the last almost two years. There are schools in this state that aren't playing this COVID game. These children are learning and pulling away from the public school kids. I'm lucky enough to have my older daughters that have the basic foundation to build upon, but what about the little guys? What about these elementary school students? Get the masks off their faces and let their smiles shine through. Make learning a positive experience. It's time for our teachers to focus their time, effort, and energy on teaching. Our children deserve it. I do want to address an issue real quick that I've had on my mind since the last board meeting. A student came up and was talking about being bullied. There's no excuse for it. I haven't had a chance to review the bully policy, but maybe we need to revisit it and add to greater consequences for the ones causing harm. I think it's an unrealistic expectation to believe that we can get rid of the bullying altogether, as shown by our own state board mandating the masks, but maybe we can incorporate some kind of lesson on building self-esteem, confidence, and how to handle these types of negative actions during middle school years.
Please finish your thought.
There will always be bullies, and we have to come... How we overcome the experience makes us stronger. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rachel.
Hello. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Rachel, and I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns. I would like to talk about getting kids back to normalcy. For those of you who believe the Pfizer shot for five-to-eleven-year-olds is ninety percent effective at preventing severe disease, I assume everyone who wants that protection will get it. My question is, when can all the students and teachers stop wearing masks? Masks were used because no vaccine was available. Now it is. I want to encourage all of you to stand up to the state board and reject their off-ramps plan. We need to get Carroll County back to a state of normalcy for all students and faculty. We are in a pandemic of fear, and it's time to get out. I know children are suffering, and well-meaning people are trying to help, but let us not confuse their depression, anxiety, suicidal tendencies, and educational delays with COVID, the infection. COVID-19 is not causing any of those things. All of these indirect impacts to children are from the pandemic response. How we responded is what caused these issues. We responded with fear. We responded by isolating ourselves. We responded by canceling everything fun we ever enjoyed. We canceled friends. We canceled holidays. We canceled human connection. It doesn't matter if your child says the mask does not bother them. It's messing with their psyche and their emotional development, and it's nothing short of child abuse. We all know that children have statistically zero percent chance of dying from COVID. Natural immunity is robust and long-lasting, and at a minimum, forty percent of kids already have it. Have you guys seen Florida? They moved on with their lives, and the virus moved on as well. There is so much focus on all this coronavirus stuff that other important issues are not being dealt with. We, as a county, need to take back control over our education system. You or our elected Board of Education, the State Board, should have no jurisdiction. I think there is more common sense in this room than not, so let's use that sense and critical thinking skills to make prudent decisions, not fly off the handle in a tailspin of media hysteria. We need to encourage students, parents, and staff to honor and accept others' decisions, even if they are different from their own. I'm not sure what all is being taught in CRT, DEI, SEL classes, but all I'm witnessing in the community is divisiveness, hate, and unacceptance of people who are making choices that others don't agree with. Forcing children to leave the public education system is not a choice anyone should have to make. They have a right to a free education and body autonomy, last time I checked. Just as teachers should not be threatened with losing their livelihoods based on a medical decision. That's not a choice. It's coercion. Neither side is going to convince the other of anything, but we need to come together and agree to disagree and support each other in making our own choices. That's what individual liberty is about. Please put the power back in the hands of individual parents and move on. Thank you.
Next speaker, Shannon Hinkhouse.
Hello, I'm Shannon Hinkhouse, and I just wanted to remind you all that you were right about opening the schools. You were right. Everyone else was wrong, and now you're right about the masks. Your decision was right. I'm tired of this and disgusted that we live in a state okay with masking kindergarteners. The vaccine is available now. Numerous states are not masking their students. Even some local private schools are making it optional. It's time to take legal action. I know this has been a long road, but it's really just beginning with the mask and possible vaccine mandates. We have a board in place with the right values, but you have to do something about it. We need to find an attorney to represent Carroll County to fight this mask mandate and possible off-ramps. If your current attorney is not on board with taking some serious action, we need to find one that will. I cannot help it if some parents feel better putting their five-year-old in a cotton mask purchased from Walmart to save them from illness. I know that is not going to keep them safe while they spend six hours with the same children in the same room every day. We are doing these things to make us feel better, but we have zero data that shows the actual impact of these silly interventions. I'm sick of having to live my life according to the irrational fears of others. Some countries have never masked children under twelve throughout the entire pandemic. They know that the benefit of the mask is less than the harm it can cause our children who need to see faces and hear their teacher and classmates clearly. I cannot even believe we are having this conversation still. The pandemic of lunacy has got to end today. Thank you.
Nalani Owens. Nalani.
Hello, my name is Nalani Owens, and I am a straight A student at Westminster High School. I'm here to discuss the dress code. The dress code is something that many people don't really talk about, and it doesn't have enough thought. The dress code has been put in place because you, as the board, believe that it helps students progress and create a calm environment. However, among research with WHS and other schools, we found it does the opposite. It is highly prejudiced towards women and people of color. The cleavage, midriff, back, and legs should not be teachers' concern nor desire to seek in young girls. In my experience and others, we as students have been overexamined by teachers that have vocalized their discomfort with objectifying young women. If nothing changes with the dress code, I want the focus to be turned on teachers and staff to question morality and pedophilic prejudice and bias, and why you, as a board, choose to silence the students and victim blame in situations where morality and accountability should be placed on teachers and staff. In my personal experience as a black woman, I am very shapely, me being Nigerian, and it's unfair for me to have to be ashamed or to hide my body and my heritage because teachers are quote-unquote uncomfortable when they should check their own biases and preferences on how they would like to see other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Brian Thompson.
Good evening, Board, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Brian Thompson, Chair of the Concerned Parents of Carroll County, and I have four little ones in the school system. I'm here to talk about the politically neutral policy that's up for discussion tonight. Our group absolutely appreciates the forethought and effort being made by school leadership and the board to modernize this policy. We realize this isn't an easy task, particularly in a world where everything is considered politically divisive and where the issue of indoctrinating versus educating our children is of concern, but that is precisely why improvements to this policy are so desperately needed. Our group had an opportunity to review the draft policy online, and while the proposed changes are a step in the right direction, more must be done to address the concerns parents have with political indoctrination. The definition section of the policy is noticeably blank. It's extremely important that we define what we mean when we say a topic is political. We propose adding verbiage that defines precisely what political means and that this be agreed upon by the board. There are many components to this definition, but a key component that's of concern to our group are topics that are divisive based on sex, race, or religion. Any topic that attempts to stereotype or define one's moral character based on any of these attributes should be captured in this definition under an umbrella of divisive concepts that should be carefully moderated. There's much more surrounding this definition that could be discussed, but we ask the board to review the email we've sent that offers some more ideas for reconsideration. Additionally, the time and place for this policy in what constitutes classroom discussion and captive audience presentation by a teacher needs to be clarified. We can all agree that core instructional time is within scope of this policy, but we must address how to approach non-instructional time, particularly activities that are student-led. As you know, our organization reported an incident related to a student group who invited a Maryland gubernatorial candidate to come speak at their school but excluded others. Our position is that the group advisor should have played the same moderating role that is expected of them in the classroom. We respectfully disagree with the school's position that this situation is not a school-sponsored activity covered under this policy, and just because the activity is student-led does not relieve the staff of their duty to be an adult in the room. We have appealed to the board to review the situation, but also highlighting this as an example where political neutrality needs to be applied consistently across school-hosted activities and done so in a way that doesn't limit the rights of students to organize and speak freely. Lastly, we need a mechanism to effectively report and track policy violations. And I would take this a step further to say that it would be beneficial in several areas beyond just political neutrality, such as hate and bullying. For the system to respond appropriately to community concerns, it's important to know how big or small the concern is, whether it's broad-scale or isolated to a specific school or classroom. And the information that could be captured and shared with the community could go a long way towards providing transparency and accountability our community has been seeking. You'll find additional details in the email we sent this afternoon regarding the proposed additions to this politically neutral policy. I thank you again for taking on this very difficult but important topic, and we appreciate everything you do for our community. And please, we beg you, take back control of our local school system.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Ellis.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kim Ellis, and I have three children in the school system. When did we start letting politics determine our decisions instead of logic and common sense? Today, I come to you requesting a revision in the ridiculous quarantine policy. Last week, my daughter was placed into close-contact quarantine due to a positive case at her lunch table. She came home in tears as she was the only one from her table pulled from the middle of class to be told about the quarantine. She was upset, wondering why she had been the only one. Unbeknownst to her, the other kids would be too, but they did not find out until they got home and were told by their parents. This leads me to my first ridiculous decision. These kids must be sent home to quarantine, but hey, please, stay and finish the school day first? Are we not concerned that they're spreading COVID throughout the day? All I ever hear is to follow the science. Well then, explain to me, how is it that a vaccinated student can remain at school and not have to quarantine, even when science has proven that a vaccinated person can not only catch COVID, but they can spread it? It's okay for a vaccinated child to remain at school, spreading COVID, but my unvaccinated child must worry about falling behind in her honors classes and losing her straight As because she's forced to stay home unless she gets vaccinated. I don't typically buy into conspiracy theories, but it certainly sounds like a push to vaccinate to me. You do all of this contact tracing, so tell me, where are the statistics showing exactly how many kids are catching COVID during lunchtime when they're being in close contact? Funny, we aren't sharing those results. How is it that a staff member can remain at school when they have a known positive case at home? You can't get much more of a close contact than that, and yes, it is happening. How is it that my daughter must quarantine, but my other two younger children can continue attending school every day? Are they not close contacts to their own sibling living within the same home? Today, I sent my daughter back to school with a copy of her negative COVID test. This was obtained days ago, when she was allowed to test on day five, which leads to my next point. She used the same piece of paper to allow her back to school on day eight. Explain to me, what sense does it make to keep a child who has tested negative and displayed zero symptoms home for additional days? If your argument is that they could potentially test positive on day six or seven, then doesn't that nullify the fact that you are allowing her to return with a test that was taken from day five? What happens if she were, in fact, to become positive on day six or seven? We would never know it, yet she'd be allowed back in school on day eight using her negative test results from day five. Why would they not be allowed back after obtaining a negative test result if that is the result that you're allowing to be used? And if you're concerned about becoming positive on those last couple of days, then why are we allowing them to test so early? None of this makes any sense. Look, I'm not against rules and policies. I understand we have to have them, but when logic and common sense have gone out the window, then you've totally lost my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Garland.
Hi, my name's Jessica Garland, and I couldn't have asked for a better person to follow because I'm here to talk about the quarantine rules too. I have five kids in this system from pre-K to high school, so I cover every level. And what I can tell you is, parents, we're not difficult people. We don't mind following rules. In fact, that's what we do at home. We make the rules, we enforce the rules, and we adjust the rules. What I can tell you right now is that your administrators at each different school are not following the rules, and they're not being consistent. For example, I have had students that had to leave right away, and I've had students that could stay and ride the bus home once they were quarantined. I've had schools quarantine students for being outside activities, and I've had schools that said only indoor activities. I've had nurses call me and tell me that the date of exposure is day zero, and I've had other ones tell me it's day one. I've had some that report the information to the Health Department for contact tracing, and I have been quarantined and not been contacted. So what I can tell you is that some of these administrators give you the information on why your child's quarantined, and some of them hide behind HIPAA. What I can also tell you is that if I log onto Google Classroom right now, I can tell you that there are forty-seven students by their name that are quarantined in sixth grade in my son's school. So there's really not a HIPAA violation there. So, what I'm asking is this. We have a COVID dashboard and it's tracking our students. This week alone, there's seven hundred and twenty-three students quarantined. That must mean it's seven hundred and twenty-three unvaccinated students. So, of those unvaccinated students that were quarantined, how many actually came back positive? I have confirmed with the health department and the school system that you have that information. Why is that not a part of our dashboard? Why are we not looking to see if these quarantines are working for our kids? Because there's seven hundred and twenty-three kids this week that are quarantined, and I guarantee a lot of them do not come back positive. So I'm asking for basically an overhaul of this dashboard. Let's actually collect data that works. Let's see if it's actually working to quarantine our children. Because I keep hearing that your kids are only young for a short time, that it goes by really quick. And we're going on year two here now as a parent, and I keep hearing that the teachers are stressed and the administrators are stressed, but we're stressed too. Our bosses are less forgiving in twenty-twenty-one as they were in twenty-twenty. And we are constantly getting emails and we're getting phone calls, and we're stressed about which kid's gonna be quarantined next and who's gonna take off work to do that, and how are they gonna fall behind? So, like I said, let's look at this COVID dashboard and let's actually start showing parents how many of these quarantined kids are coming back positive, and let's see if it works, because that would make sense to me. Thank you.
Kit Hart.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Kit Hart, and I am the Chapter Chair for Carroll County's Moms for Liberty. This national nonpartisan organization was started under a year ago in Florida by a group of moms who saw the need for less governmental overreach and more parental invol- involvement in their school systems. Since January, Moms for Liberty has grown to a hundred and sixty-six chapters among thirty-three states, re- representing over seventy thousand parents. The reason for our very rapid expansion is due to the fact that so many parents across the country felt that their school boards were making decisions that were not in the best interest of their children. We have witnessed school administrations sever their partnerships with parents and our rights as the primary educators of our children stripped away edict by edict. I approach you today to lend the support of our organization to those members of the board who advocate for parental freedoms. We appreciate your courageous efforts to make masking optional in the county this past, in the, this past fall. We plan to arrai- to raise awareness in the community about the motives and goals of all candidates who plan to run for the Board of Ed in twenty-twenty-two. Because these positions are nonpartisan, Moms for Liberty can and will endorse candidates who have just, who have demonstrated that they are liberty-minded and will collaborate with parents in all educational, social, and medical issues. Over the past few months, I've had the privilege of speaking at several board meetings regarding the issues of parental choice. The main lesson I've learned is that there are two competing mindsets. One maintains that the school is responsible for the upbringing, health, and morality of our children. They entrust government institutions with power and control over children from the values that are imparted to the medical decisions that are made. Conversely, Moms for Liberty is rooted in personal responsibility. We believe that parents are the arbita- arbiters of our children's values. We also assume responsibility for the physical, mental, and emotional health of our children. I cannot fathom telling someone that I know better than they do what is best for their child. Any sane, law-abiding citizen should be able to make decisions for their children that they believe will protect, enrich, and fulfill them. We hope the members of this board continue to make decisions that recognize and solidify a partnership with parents. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with each of you in the coming months.
Rachel Felkamp.
Good evening, Board. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have four young children, two of which are currently in the school system. Um, I don't feel the need to come up here and convince the board that the mask mandate is an abuse of the state's authority and wrong. Um, I feel that we're mostly on the same page with that. However, the state board seems to want to keep our kids masked at least through twenty-twenty-three, despite increasing amounts of data that indicate masking is negatively impacting our children. Our kids are falling behind. I can speak from personal experience. My oldest is behind, and many other elementary-age school kids are behind, leaving s- leaving students and teachers to play catch-up, which is a direct result of closing schools and forced masking. I am grateful to this board that fought to reopen schools. Now we need the board to stand and fight this overreach of power with legal action. If we don't, they will never stop. Anytime the state sees a supposed threat to public health, warranted or not, they will continue to shut down our schools, force ma- masking, quarantining, and try to force vaccination. We have to take a stand now. With that being said, I'd like to hear directly from our legal counsel as to why legal action has not been pursued. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Beam. Bam.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm grateful for you and your service to us. Maybe you've recognized my name by now because I've emailed you a lot, so I appreciate um your time in reading that, but I'm here to just share that I care because my kids are hurting. And uh, you know, you can't really tell by my face right now, but I'm about to cry because um, you know, empathy is not really possible with a mask. Just think about that, because um, my kids come home with these papers. Oh, they're teaching you how to deal with your feelings. They're teaching you about uh, your emotions, your empathy, because my son's in kindergarten. That's when you learn all of that. Uh, he wasn't in preschool. This is his first chance to be able to do that. But no, how can you send home papers like that when it's impossible? And he's been bullied a lot, and kids can't see a child's face after they've been hurt. He can't see it. I wrote a lot of words, but then I thought I'd just share that because a lot of wonderful people here have shared their hearts, but you know, it's, it's a struggle for us, and every child's different, and my daughter actually struggles it with it more than my son. She's in second grade and he's in kindergarten, and she struggles with change. So, in the first week of school, she had the freedom. We said, yes, we decide as a family. You have the freedom to choose. Then it was taken away, and um, just a tailspin of anxiety after that. Trouble eating, trouble sleeping, uh, missing the bus. Because she, she is very sensitive. It's not a negative thing. Some of us are sensitive more than others. Twenty percent, I don't know whatever percentage it is, but I'm one of those people. And she feels those feelings so intently, and when things change, she has trouble adapting. So this new regulation is not helping anyone like her who needs to know she can count on things being stable. After all this time, um, everyone has their own struggle they're going through. Some parents do agree that it's right to mask and it's right to get the vaccine. Our family does not. And our voices should be heard. We should have the freedoms. And as my daughter says, we should follow the golden rule because treat others the way you would like to be treated. Keep it simple. Let's go back to simplicity, and let's act in love and hold those people accountable who are being bullied to us. And the government and the state, they're bullying us, and it's time to say no, that's enough. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Stem Jr.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. I'm speaking here for the bus drivers. Uh, this wasn't on my agenda at the beginning, but the COVID thing is sort of a, got me a little bit, uh, that I want to bring out here. Used to be that they went to school and they could take their mask off. But you come out to the bus and the bus driver had to wear the mask. And if you can see from right now, my glasses are steaming up talking here. What's it called? A safety problem driving the bus down the road? Okay, because everybody didn't have glasses, but us would do, and we were having a real problem. So sometimes I have to pull it off my nose down so it's not all, you know, fogged up on me. The main reason I'm here today is for the bus drivers, is for pay and benefits. You know, I got an article here from the November twenty-first Sunday Carroll County Times. It says, "Other proposed legislation discussed the media inclusion raising county commissioner's salary." Uh, I won't say the county commissioner, but I'll say, uh, the school board, raising the school board members' salaries from eight thousand to twelve thousand dollars annually. Thirteen thousand dollars for the board chair. A law which requires background checks and numerous other things that's in this article. Then they give me, as a bus driver and other bus drivers, approximately forty cents an hour raise. I mean, that's a slap in the face to me. And this county is short on drivers right now. There's, we're short at our lot. I work for Sunset Bus Lines. I've been driving for over forty years, all big equipment. I retired from the fire department in ninety-four. That was my proudest job. My second was, uh, bus driving. I'm also a proud American, proud Carroll Countyan, and a proud veteran. You know, and the thing that I'm asking for is, it seems like we be getting ke- kept in the dark here. We keep saying we're gonna get a raise. That's all we hear. You're gonna get a raise, you're gonna get a raise. When? Can you tell us anything about it at all, how much we're gonna get? We had a meeting. We're starting to try to get a bus drivers little group together, start talking. The more people we get on the bus driver's side, it's great. Uh, we just asked for some people to go and tell us, you know, what we can do. Uh, we would like to meet with the contractors. I would like to meet with the contractors and just discuss some of the things we need to do. We're asking you to give us some information on a raise, and please help us out and give us a raise. Uh, so that's my concern, so I'd like to thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Smith.
Good evening. Let me try to get through this. My son is a freshman at, at Manchester Valley High School. I'm here to speak on his voice. We all know that the freshman year is very hard, but can you imagine? Going through it being bullied. My son has special needs, which make which makes it a hundred times harder for him. I've watched my son struggle his entire school career. Disabilities are hard enough, let alone to do. Then you're starting a new school, new guidelines, new learning systems, dealing with COVID. My son was extremely excited to start his journey as a freshman this ye- this year. Yeah. That is all changed. My son is now in therapy and seeks counselors daily because of the bullying. He seeks a counselor at school every day and now has in-home sessions once a week. I had to pick my son up last week early from school because two sto- students thought it was okay to take paper clips apart and make them sharp and throw them at his head. Then they called him an effing retard on top of it. Hearing your son tell you something like that is pretty gut-wrenching. I don't care who you are, hearing a child say that. I kept my son home the next day. I was scared. He was scared until I got to talk to somebody and have meetings to figure this out. I was able to schedule meetings with the with the teachers and the principal, and we have some resolution, but I did not see anything with zero tolerance. I saw nothing that was act upon that that was something important. I felt it was band-aided, if you will. Um, I did not want to send my sh- my son as, looking as a sheep into a wolf's den. I was, I was scared and, and very worried for him. My son is not himself. His sparkle has diminished. His entire being has not, has completely depe- depleted. He struggles every day. Now he's been talking about death. He does not want to be here anymore because he doesn't want to feel the pain of the bullies. No child should have to think about death, have anxiety through the roof, and worry that they are going to be hurt physically or mentally or anything while they're going to school. I am just asking that we take this zero tolerance and use it and make it something that is talked about, you know, preached from the rooftops. I just want to make everybody aware that this bullying stuff goes on a lot more than what we see, and it needs to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, um I appreciate you sharing this evening. I know that was difficult, and that certainly should never be tolerated, so I understand exactly what it is that you're saying. I'm gonna ask Mr. King to connect with you in the hallway right after this, um, so we can further support you and your son. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Scanlon.
Hi, uh, my name is Tom Scanlon, a candidate for Board of Education. Uh, we know that mental health and bullying are ongoing problems in all schools. Um, so as a change of pace, I'd like to highlight something positive, a, a great program that I was unaware of until recently. Um, Sources of Strength is a suicide prevention and anti-bullying initiative. It uses adult advisors, the educators in a school, to develop a network of peer leaders who can help support their fellow students who are struggling. Right now, Sources of Strength is in all of our middle schools and four of our high schools. It's been at Francis Scott Key, Manchester Valley, and Winter's Mill for a couple of years. But the pandemic slowed things down, so it's just getting started at Westminster High School. I was there last week to see a meeting in action. Uh, Dr. Lockard was there, uh, recognizing Aiden, Aiden Zaslow, the student who designed this wonderful graphic for the program. It was exciting to see how engaged the staff and students were. They started with a game, kind of like charades, and then they had, um, discussions at, at tables to talk about the topic of gratitude. And it was true, it truly showed the partnership between educators and students. And the energy in, in the room made me actually miss being in a high school, you know, a school. Um, uh, the plan is to bring the program to all the high schools, including Gateway, next year. Uh, Sources of Strength also has an elementary school program, so I would encourage you to look into that as well. Um, it's good stuff. It, it's no cure-all panacea. Nothing is, and we just heard an example of how you know, certain students, especially special needs students, are particularly vulnerable. Um, but it is, um, a tool in the toolbox, another tool. And it's like our gay straight alliance groups. They're active in our high schools, and they provide some sort of safety net for LGBTQ students. They can't solve all the problems, but it's another tool, just another layer of support. A few years ago, there was a push to bring GSAs, uh, to our middle schools. It didn't really pan out. I would love to see Carroll County partner with our local PFLAG or- organization to try to revitalize that initiative. Our middle school s- s- students certainly need more support. And speaking of support, programs like these will only help our building-level administrators. Um, across the board, they are overwhelmed, just like all educators are. So anything we can do to help is good, but thanks for your time.
Our next speaker is Ash Tough. Our next speaker is Sophia.
Good evening. My name is Sophia. I'm a junior at Manchester Valley High. I've come out to speak tonight about the issue with bullying. Not just with my fellow peers and students in the school system, but also with fellow teachers, staff members, who are online and in person dealing but also with fellow teachers, staff members, who are online and in person dealing with bullying issues. Me being an everyday 2021 teenager, I have social media and follow many pages, including community pages on Facebook. These pages are where you see the most hateful, disgusting, and disturbing comments about parents, students, people who see opinions differently, and even our Board of Education members. I find it disturbing that when a student comes on a, on a community page, that adults verbally attack that student and make false accusations. Keep in mind, these comments are even said by teachers and staff members in the CCPS school system. I don't know about you, but if I said things about my boss like that, I'd be fired in a heartbeat. Some of these comments aren't by teachers and staff, but are liked, loved, and even laughed at by fellow teachers in the school system. And in case some of these people didn't know, if you like a poster comment, everyone can see that you have liked that poster comment. These are teachers who are teaching their students that bullying is wrong. These are teachers that are teaching your children and grandchildren that bullying can cause serious issues and even lifetime drama. Being someone who is friends with people who have been bullied, a sister who sees her brother having to deal with sexual harassment at his school, towards him, and being someone who has been bullied in the past, it's disturbing knowing these people who are supposed to be our safe place and mentors are the ones who are villains behind a screen. If I were a parent to a student in the CCPS school system and finding out the teacher who told my child bullying online and in person was cruel and would have consequences, but likes, but likes a post that is bullying individuals, and you are no better than the bully themselves. As students, we need to stand together. If you see a fellow classmate being bullied or harassed, step in and put a stop to it. We are people who make, we are the people who can make a change. To the adults in this room, particularly those who, that run various community pages, don't allow hate, don't allow the bullying, and do not allow the name-calling. Set the example for your children. There is a difference in disagreeing and how other, another person feels and flat-out being hateful. Like the old saying, do unto others as you would have done unto yourselves. Teachers, please don't turn the blind eye. Staff members, please do not turn a blind eye. Bullying is something that is not to be let go. It is to be taken care of. Have I made mistakes? Yes. And I have owned up to them, and that's how the change starts. We need to put an end to bullying, and it starts today. We don't want, we don't know what battles others are facing, but just be nice. Being nice can make a difference in the world. Just like Thumper's mom said, if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say it at all. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments as well and your sentiment. Board members, I bring this up in new business, but I wanted to make sure that you heard this as well as others because I know a lot of times people leave after a public comment. Uh, I certainly think it's, uh, time that we put on our agenda a review of our bullying harassment policies as well as updates so that the board can have a full public conversation that we can continue to get input about how we can improve and consider all of the things that we're hearing as it relates to the impacts of bullying and harassment.
I absolutely agree. I was going to actually make that suggestion later on, too, so I guess.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Trump.
Hi, my name is Susan Trump. I'm here to speak out against mask mandates and mandatory vaccines for children. I have five children and three grandchildren that have attended and are attending Carroll County Public Schools. Masks should be an option, and by the way, not a mandate, and by the way, a mandate is not a law. Parents should be the ones to decide what is best for their child. The ones that choose to wear them are probably the same ones that are masking alone in a car or outdoors, the ones that are living in fear. Masks increase airway resistance during exhalation. Masks can lead to increased levels of carbon dioxide in the bloodstream. Masks harbor bacteria, especially if worn longer than two hours. And the children have to wear them for six-plus hours in school. People should use common sense and common courtesy. If a child is sick, do not send them to school. Don't just put a mask on them and send them out. We ask the board to hear our pleas. I feel sad every day that I watch my children and grandchildren walk into the school masked, barely able to breathe, and not even be able to share a smile with a friend. Yet they know, they now see this as normal. This is far from normal, and if we keep complying with this, it's never going to end. It's only going to get worse. It's about control and fear. It's nonsense. The school board has the ability to change this. We have the ability to unmask and breathe again. Look at all of us in here wearing these useless pieces of cloth on our faces. We look ridiculous. How many of us actually believe they work? How many of us choose to wear them out shopping or playing golf? Have you tried to sing with it? Or have you tried to play the flute in it? Our children have to. My daughter's in seventh grade chorus, and they're putting on a performance tomorrow, and they all have to wear their masks to sing. I can barely get through this short speech with this mask on. My son, who's in fourth grade, had to wear two masks, which basically covered his entire face to allow a small hole to stick the flute in. I'm not even sure how he could see because he has glasses. Two of these big blue masks, and he was expected to put a flute in the side of the mask to blow and learn how to play the flute. So I contacted the school and said I'd rather him just quit. I don't want him going through all that just to play the flute. And they did change that policy. He can now pull it down completely when he has to blow the note. I just really feel like the mask should be a parent's choice, not dictated by the government, the state, the board. And the same with the vaccines. If that's going to come into play, I feel it should be parent's choice. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tammy Jones.
I'm here, I'm going to speak for Tammy Jones. She does have a medical exemption not to wear the mask, but she was, she did not feel comfortable. All board members have to be bonded with surety bonds under Maryland State Code 21-101 through 21-103. Friday, December 10th, a claim against the state board's bonds will be made. The claim is permanent and is a liability against the person. I will forward the paperwork to CC Board of Education to review. Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, it's not that she, that Ms. Lawson spoke twice. She, there is a woman out in the lobby. She just gave a note to Ms. Lawson. I just kind of saw the exchange in the back. So it's not that Ms. Lawson spoke twice. It was that she got someone's note for them that's in the lobby.
Uh, next speaker is Diane Grody. Grody, I'm sorry, Ms. Grody.
Good evening. As follow-up to Monday's budget workshop, from a bus contractor perspective, yes, we are grateful for CCPS honoring our contracts since March of 2020. And when part, with the exception of fuel reimbursements, our officers diligently requested reimbursements at our regular route levels rather than the minimum, much lower pay rates originally offered to us. With the ongoing expenses of vehicle loans, insurances, and administrative costs, and the retention of most employees, this was of utmost importance. We are still here as your transportation vendors. The trans, the Formula Committee, in which I have participated since April, and the October 13 Committee Report finalized the substantial savings over the past twenty years in the transportation budget. As small formula increases were received, other larger variables were modified. The formation of this committee was a result of our request to save our businesses. Our contractor base has significantly decreased over the years. We are trying to retain our local contractors who have served Carroll County ever since busing began. CCPS, CCPS, um, once owned about twenty buses with drivers' salaries of about forty thousand dollars each, um, but that has also dissolved. It was stated that our supervisors do not know the parameters for discussing additional compensation or incentives for our employees. As other local counties are immediately compensating their drivers and assistants, our discussions must continue. Without our employees, we will not survive. A driver applicant hired today without a CDL would realistically be certified in March, but few applications are being received. In the budget workshop, medical benefit packages were discussed. The legalities were carefully explained regarding CCPS and the vendor's relationship. So the best solution would be to offer an increased per-hour pay scale effective January 3rd. We have requested the three additional, um, requirements as contractors for the 23 budget, but right now, there, it has been to no avail. Please remember that our budget saved 1.2 million dollars just last school year. It takes years to thoroughly understand the transportation industry, which we do operate at various business levels. Until one experiences all the facets as the business owner, you cannot appreciate our personal and financial responsibilities and dedication. We respectfully request your full support of our contractors and employees as we move forward. Hopefully, our committee will not be renamed as Save Our Local Contractors and Their Employees Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Irene Savage.
Good evening. Forgive me if I mess up. First, let me say I want to thank you all for serving our county and to tell you I wouldn't want to be in your old shoes for anything in today's world. I know that there's only so much money to go around, and you've got some very hard decisions ahead of you to make. I am here asking for the requests for the second allotment for the contractors. Please be accepted. I appreciate the fact that you'd voted to approve the proposed formula that is in front of you, and I know this is a lot of money. However, the contractors were struggling pre-COVID. The inflation that has come along with this epidemic has just exasperated all of our issues. A few years ago, if you remember, they did do a forty-bus reduction, which did take money from contractors. They did that to save money. Then they started to change our fam, our formula, which again, took money from contractors. I understand we need to save money, but we also need to make a living. I believe if you talk to contractors that have gone out of business, that you may just find that they found that it came a point when it was no longer viable for them to continue to be in this business. I do like what I do, but I also have bills I have to pay. We don't receive any type of compensation for health insurance or retirement for us or our drivers. The proposed formula will help us, but I'm not sure that it's going to be enough with today's inflation. When it comes to our drivers and assistants, I hope that you all realize that we have a very elite group of employees. I know for a fact that there are driver candidates that have not passed Carroll County's testing when they've come in to apply for a job, but they have gone on to become a driver in our surrounding counties. The drivers and assistants of today are facing so many more challenges than they did just ten years ago with the world being what it is. They deserve to be compensated for what they do. They do a very good job. They are very dedicated people. They could go anywhere with their credentials and get much better-paying jobs with benefits. So I please ask you to remember, these people that drive our children to school every day are the best in this state because we've turned others away that drive for other counties. Please help us keep them. Thank you.
And any other speakers?
That is everything. Uh, employee groups. I'm so sorry. Again, I'm a rookie. It's my first day.
Good evening, school board, Superintendent Lockard, and I'm guessing no commissioners like out in virtual world or anything? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. My name is Celeste Jordan. I am, I'm sorry, just, that sounded, I'm Vice President for CCA. I'm filling in for Teresa Bazler-Maculla, who is unavailable for tonight. We recently celebrated an American Education Week. CCA would like to thank all the educators who make our school system successful. From the teachers, guidance counselors, nurses, clerical, custodian, therapists, instructional assistants, security assistants, our bus drivers, and administration. My one advisee asked me if American Education Week was a spirit week for teachers. It was not. Okay. We have all heard the issues, about the issues faced by educators this year. Educators being overwhelmed and stressed out to the point where they want to leave the profession. Why is that? What is different about this year compared to last year, which was horrible? Why is this a job I no longer love? For me, I have to maintain a Schoology page for classes. For the quarantine students, I have to, so even if all my students are there, I still maintain it. I also maintain it for the quarantine kids. Now, I'm lucky. I have lesson plans from twenty-six years to go back on. I can work off those, update my lesson plan, then I put it up on Schoology, which is a multi-step process. Then I save individual copies for each class somewhere else because then I use my little board to write on it so that my notes are electronically added to the paper. Then I take those notes and upload them to Schoology so that kids can have access to the notes I did in class. I can't use my board anymore, which, trust me, as a math teacher, has, has troubled me. Okay, so then I spend at least six hours each weekend just working on putting information on Schoology for the upcoming week. Updating a calendar to help keep my kids organized, creating materials, again, to keep my students organized. I know it works because another teacher approached me and said their kids were getting confused about due dates, and they said, "You need to go see Ms. Jordan, ask her how to do a calendar because her calendars were so good last year." If I don't spend six hours doing this work, I will not have enough time during the week then to grade, make copies, adjust my lesson plans as needed. I spend my entire mod, planning mod, working. Now, how is this different from last year? Because I did all this, I did most of this last year. Well, last year, I did not spend the six hours on the weekends. I would use my planning mod, and then I would spend about an hour after school, after the contractual day ended. And I would do that each day, and I would get this stuff done. But this year, I have to use that time to work with students. The only days I do not have students staying after school for assistance are the days that I have meetings to attend or Fridays. And the students have asked for the Fridays. But I have to say no because I just need the Friday to clean up my desk so I can be ready for the next week. But if I allowed Fridays, I'd be there on Fridays, too. Understand, I love working with kids in a small setting. I have always loved staying after school with kids. But I'm not just tutoring them for my class. I have to help them make up the last eighteen months because now photo math is no longer available to them. And that was what they were using for the last eighteen months at home. Okay? I have great classes this semester. This is not about the kids. Students in my classes are working hard and have, for the most part, totally adapted to being back in the classroom. It was a rough first two weeks, but then they got the hang of things. Um, they have unique needs to our current situation. I am teaching Honors Algebra II right now. Some of my students never had a real, full Algebra I class. Now, the reality is, I can't slow down and just completely abandon Algebra II because some of these students in this class are going to take AP Calculus, a class that will save them a ton of money when they go to college. So I can't just abandon things. So I find myself teaching Algebra I and Algebra II together, which is why I'm redoing lesson plans as well. Okay? Tom Scanlon mentioned Sources of Strength. I was one of the first members of that at Winters Mill. I gave it up this year because I couldn't, I could not miss a flex to let students come in to get extra help. So I had to give up that club. We have all heard about other counties and states who are closing schools and extending holiday breaks or giving up long weekends. I'm not a fan of this idea. I'm not a fan of this idea. Trading a day in November for a day in June, not going to help me out. Also, it'll hurt students. The AP test dates, I am a high school teacher, those dates never change. So taking a day away now, not helping anybody. Other counties are doing early dismissals. So I thought to myself, how would a two-hour and forty-five-minute early dismissal really help me? Well, first of all, the day counts. And more importantly, we feed the students because that is a major issue. Students will be taught on an early dismissal. Trust me, I teach every single day. I would use that early dismissal then, when the kids do leave, to work and to get ahead a little bit and give myself one free weekend a month where I don't take the bag home, where I don't see the bag sitting there on the steps saying, looking at me, saying, "You really could be doing something. Might actually get to clean my house." One free weekend per month would make a huge difference in my mental health and help me survive this year. One weekend, I would have nothing to do for my work. I'm a twenty-six-year veteran. I don't expect that this job will be done between seven fifteen and two forty-five. But something's going to have to give. Here are what other counties across Maryland are doing. Wycomico, they're having seven early release days, one per month through the end of the year. Again, those days count. Calvert, additional two hours of work time. They did get an additional personal day for helping with mental health issues. One of the C counties, and you know if you're from Maryland, there's a lot of counties that start with a C, so I think it might be, I don't think it was Caroline, but they added four and a half days to the calendar, starting in January, self-directed planning for students. Again, some of the people did extend breaks, not a fan. Worcester will have half-days during the course of the year. They also canceled meetings. They no longer have faculty meetings. They realized it can all be handled in an email, and that's an hour back. Allegheny, they're actually doing delayed openings. So they're just opening three hours later. Again, more of their counties are reducing meetings. They're trying to get as much planning time to teachers as they can. And Arundel, early dismissals. Somerset, six half-days, one per month up until May. Howard County, six half-days starting December sixteenth. They're going to do it on the third Wednesdays of the month. If you have other ideas, please, CCA wants to meet and discuss it. We need help. We are asking for relief, but really, I'm begging for relief at this point. Thank you.
Ms. Herbert?
Ms. Jordan? I want to thank you personally. I have been to your, her classroom, and I am telling you, everyone is on board, everyone is working. And I saw a student come in late. She has a system. They go right to a file cabinet. They get their papers, and there's no questions. They just get to work. Now, I have a question. You said you missed your board, or could you explain that?
I'm sorry, I miss a chalkboard, to be exact. Not a big fan of the whiteboard. But now even I can't use the whiteboard.
Why is that?
Well, because I have, what's called a little Elmo board. I don't know what the real name for it is, if anyone. No, no, oh, but trust me, I got an over protector, too. They make fun of me for that one. Okay, it's a board that you write on with a special pen that's not really a pen. And then it goes onto the computer. So that way, the notes are captured on my Word document, which then I make a PDF of it, and then I put it on Schoology so that if a kid is absent, they see my actual notes.
But you said yours is not working, or it is working?
No, no, mine is working. It just kills me that I can't just use the board. I meant to move.
I understand, okay.
I meant to move. And seriously, if someone wants to get me a chalkboard back, I would totally take that tip.
And I thank you because it's very impressive when you walk into her classroom, and they are, they are all working, and I thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take this time so we can get ready to get into all the other business. If anyone's going to be leaving, so there's shuffling around so we don't interrupt anyone speaking. Thank you, everyone.
And as they're leaving, their next item is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Lockard, as soon as you have order?
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. So joining us this evening is Sue Doyle, our acting, yep, that'd be great, our acting Carroll County Health Department Director. Thank you for joining us. I know that the state has experienced some cyber issues, which has limited the ability to get some of the data that we've typically had for these presentations. But I know, speaking with you and Maggie this afternoon. Right. Is your microphone on, Sue?
Better?
We good? Okay, great.
First time, you know.
We'll go ahead, yeah, so welcome. We'll go ahead to you. We typically go through the presentations, ask some questions, and then we also have staff available to the board for any additional questions.
You've acknowledged our technology challenges. So normally, this data would have been through last week. This data is actually two weeks old, and I apologize. But it's the best we can do, and I do have some updates that I can give that we know. So we're looking at our transmission rates, which have gone down slightly. Over the last two weeks, we have some preliminary data that we can't drill down a lot into that says that they are continuing to come down. So we can go next slide. And we can see that eleven-fourteenth, like I said, it's about two weeks behind. These are our cases, our confirmed cases and our probable cases. You can also see that there's a slight decrease. This is often good to note that some of these probable cases have become confirmed cases. So this data kind of varies as you look at it. Next slide. Hospitalizations, I do have some new information on this. So our hospitalizations went up, and we've been working very closely with hospitals since we can't get some of our data. And we spoke with the hospital today, and they shared that I'm fully able to give you this information. In the last five days, they've had a seventy-eight percent increase in hospitalizations related to COVID. My understanding is they're about in the red, where they're going to have to start shipping people out. The other information that's interesting to note is that all the Life Bridge hospitals look at their data from all of the hospitals for COVID. And if you combine Levendale with Sinai with Northwest, you get the total that's at Carroll. So we have the highest COVID hospitalizations of all of the Life Bridge hospitals. Next slide. This is our deaths per week. So all of our deaths were from the community. None of them were facility-related, meaning none of them occurred in nursing homes or other institutions. There you can go on. No, next slide. Okay, these are November twenty-seventh, so these are a little bit past the twenty-first. These are our vaccination case rates. So it talks about in our COVID breakthrough cases. You can see, the interesting thing about this slide is that the population that's not vaxxed is getting smaller and smaller. We've had an increased amount of people coming, especially with the new variant that's out. Our clinics usually house onsite clinics, sixty people a week, and we weren't filling them at all. We were getting like maybe ten or thirteen people to come. Now they're overfilled. We're expanding our hours so that people can get in and get those vaccinations. So you can see that most of the cases are occurring in not vaccinated people. Next slide. All right, so good news is we've had a decrease in COVID in every age range except for those over sixty-five. What's important to note here is that the fact that they're having breakthrough cases in the over-sixty-five population is mostly related to the fact that there's other comorbid conditions going on. So they may have COPD, or they may have some other complicating medical diagnosis that's causing that. Next slide. Good slide. Wish I could tell you, give you an updated slide, but our vaccination rates are going up. We have about seventy-two percent of people in the county that are partially vaccinated and sixty-five point nine percent, almost sixty-six percent, that are fully vaccinated in the county. And then the next slide, I think, takes us by age range. So our over-sixty-fives are our best population, but they are the population we started with, and the vaccines have been out there for them longer. Our ten to nineteen, these categories will probably be changed to kind of match what we're looking at now. So we'll be looking at twelve to seventeen. Hopefully, they can break this data down differently. Our five to nine population, like I said, this data is three weeks old. Twenty-two percent of our five to nine population was vaccinated as of two weeks ago. I know that we've run two second-dose clinics. We're doing our third second-dose clinic this Saturday, and the next one will be next week, and then we'll be looking at that. I also know that how the state distributed the vaccine, there was more demand than there was vaccine. The first couple of weeks, the majority of the vaccine came to the Health Department to work with the schools to formulate these clinics so that we can get this out faster. Moving forward, they're going to be looking at the distribution of that to go to more pediatricians in the county that were able to get the services up and running and to get to more pharmacies. All seven pharmacies, major pharmacy chains, have the five to eleven vaccine. They're, not every, like CVS, Walgreens, those type, not every one of those will be vaccinated in five to eleven, but there will be at least one in the county that's doing those vaccinations. I know that there's plans to move forward. I have not read fully the whole White House plan, nor is it explained in enough detail for me to understand how it's going to be rolled out to the states. But I know that one of the plans was to have a family vaccination center where people could go and the adults could be vaccinated or get their boosters while their children were vaccinated. So once we have more information about that, I'll make sure that we get that out to you so that you can push it out to the community so that they're aware of how they can get this. Next slide. Okay, so we have Pfizer clinics for children five to eleven on the fifteenth at Man Valley Fire Department, yeah, Man Valley Fire Department. Isn't it Manchester Fire Department? I think that's, and Thursday, the sixteenth, at Winfield. Both are from three-thirty to seven-thirty. We have a new clinic that's open for twelve-plus with all three vaccines, and McDaniel on Tuesday, the fourteenth, from two to six P.M. People can register for any of these clinics on the Health Department's website, Monday through Friday. The clinics are on our website. We have regular clinics Tuesdays and Fridays. There's two clinics coming at the Carriage House Small, Shop Small Holiday Market on twelve-eleven and twelve-eighteen, just so that everybody's aware of those. And next slide. So we have limited testing available through the Health Department. We test people who are close contacts. We test people with symptoms, people working with our contact tracing team, people referred by the school or childcare centers, and people referred by their healthcare provider because they're unable to provide testing. Testing is being offered Tuesdays and Fridays from nine to three, Wednesdays from twelve to four-thirty. And we do have some, we are distributing home testing kits, rapid home testing kits. We did our first round of distribution. We're receiving about eight hundred test kits every two weeks to get out into the community. Going to be working with the public libraries and some of our other partners on getting that out so that people don't have to come to Westminster, but they can go in their communities and get those free test kits. Next slide, please. I'll talk off the cuff about Omicron and what I know so far. So it, the concern with Omicron is that it is much more transmissible, transmissible? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little stuffy today, and it's not been a good day for me. I woke up and was like, this is not a good day to lose your voice. They are, PCR testing is picking up this variant in our community. There are three cases in Maryland. I'm sure by now there are more, but our data systems are down, and I cannot speak to that information. The tricky part with Omicron is that the reinfection rate, so that people could get that and then three weeks later get it again, is what they're saying because it's highly versatile and it mutates. So, you know, the answer is vaccinate, wash your hands, wear a mask, and, you know, protect yourself and others. Sooner we get more of the population vaccinated, the better off we will be.
Ms. Doyle, I have to say, I'm a little confused by that because today, this morning, NBC was discussing the new variant, and they were saying that they had seen so far that, yeah, it might be more transmissible, but it's not.
It's not as.
As bad. It's basically the mutation is dying, is what they said. It's something that they also saw in smallpox, that when all that had occurred.
All of this is very new, so I have last week's.
Like everything, you know, it just kind of like, they said, hopefully, this is the end of the mutations and is kind of dying off. They also said the booster is blocking it.
Yes.
That was another thing that they talked about.
We're encouraging people to get their boosters. We have more booster clinics coming up throughout the county, and we know that they're available everywhere in the community right now. So on our website, you can go in, and it'll tell you which physician's offices. Some of them are only doing their own patients, which pharmacies you can go to, and then you can always come to the Health Department.
And I do have one more other question. Are we tracking flu cases in the county?
I'm sure we are, and I can check on that. I can get that back to you. I'm, it has not been brought to my attention because COVID's been our focus, and getting back my ability to function has been our focus. We've got about twenty computers spread out throughout the Health Department. That's not a lot. Just want to make sure that we are here. So as far as school cases go, the Carroll County Public Schools dashboard continues to show an increase in cases. We looked at the data, and the last data I was able to see was the week of, after Thanksgiving, which showed me Thanksgiving week. And we compared it to data from two years ago, and we threw that out because that's not really a good week to look at absenteeism. We think a lot of people pull their kids out to go to family events or to travel and things like that. So it was significantly higher, but we don't think that it's related to COVID. We think that there were other things. I'm getting text as we speak that the flu is at the normal level right now. There's been no surge in the flu. Let's see.
I think some of us have questions about sports, too, and sports quarantine protocols.
I do have a question on one of the slides. Ms. Doyle, I know that in the past, Mr. Singer would include the hospitalization and deaths by age group, and those don't seem to be in here this time.
It may have been, we couldn't get it. We were able to pull some of the slides off of our website that are posted. We're not able to download anything right now. So we can view, and we can print at home, and we can pull things off our website or from other documents. But at this point, and it's just one of those. So you want hospitalizations by, I might have it in another presentation. I'm glad to share that. From the Commissioner's presentation last week.
Right, I think that would be really helpful because a lot of our discussions have centered around like, so it, we know the cases are going up, but, you know, this is supposed to be about.
I'm pretty sure.
Hospitalizations and deaths, you know, much more focused on that, like in making sure that the healthcare system doesn't get overwhelmed, right? And so we had seen for many, many months that there were no additional hospitalizations of kids even during the situation. So I think that's something that we really want to keep our eye on and tracking, especially as we try to figure out what to do with quarantine rules and potential changes.
So Maggie texted me and said that the hospitalizations have stayed the same. The trends have not changed. And as far as deaths, last week's presentation to the Commissioners, there were two deaths. They were in the over-sixty-five population.
Okay.
Just so you're aware of that. Those I remember off the top of my head.
I have a couple of questions, and if you don't mind, between your voice and the time, I may send you an email if you don't mind. the time, I may send you an email if you don't mind, but.
Not a problem.
But two of my concerns, my biggest concern is, and I think the world knows it, is the mask. And what I struggle with in Carroll County, and I don't know if you guys have anything to do with it, at the senior centers, when they play bingo and bridge, they have to wear a mask. According to this, they are ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent vaccinated. They're not going to get any safer. I know many eighty and ninety year olds who will not go because they refuse to wear a mask. And I just hate to see us denying that end of the population and, and it's so hard. I could go on forever, but of course, American Federation of Teachers set the metrics that we've got to live by. We, we're not going to be back to fifty cases. We haven't been fifty cases since August. And like you were saying, the cases are probably going to increase because this is way more contagious, but much less serious. The vaccines maybe can save us, but I'm, I'm really worried that the five to nines, it's going to be a third, less than half. I don't, I don't think we're going to see eighty percent of that. I'm curious, when you say percentage in Carroll County, is that the number vaccinated by the whole population, zero through whatever, or is it by who's eligible?
I think there was a, can you go back? I don't know who has control. There's a slide that said.
Yeah, you had a slide that showed the percentage, but I just didn't know what the base number is.
Oh, you want to know the population that's.
When you say the whole county is seventy-nine percent, is that, does that include five and up or zero and up or, you know?
I would have to check on that because until a month ago, we did not have vaccines from five to eleven. So it may have been from twelve to.
Yeah. Yeah, I look at, I look at it that.
It's including all ages, including children who were vaccinated.
Okay, so it's all ages.
The slide to include the children.
Because I don't know how they're going to do that number, but I think eighty percent of the total population is unrealistic, but we could make that. We're not going to make the cases. And what concerns me, and Ms. Savigny touched on it, in twenty-some months, under eighteen, we've had eighteen kids go to the hospital. Since June, when we were mask optional throughout the summer, I think that number's four. And, and the kids are not seriously getting it, and I don't know how we get to the point. I just, I just feel like, and you've got a job to do, we used to, your predecessor, I would say, you've got your job, we got our job. We need kids in school, you need to take care of the county, but I, I just, I just feel like we're punishing the sixties and above at the senior centers, the kids in school, and even the kids in school, they get off the bus and these are gone, you know? And, and the community numbers really, really affect us and our numbers. I don't think we affect the community, but I think they affect us. And I, I'm not sure, if we got to live with the data that the state wants, we're going to be wearing masks for two more years and it's a shame. I, I'm hoping when we get to the point that this is less severe than the flu, which is going to happen, that, that the number of cases doesn't matter anymore, but it's, it's going to be tough. And like I say, if you could just consider that stuff and if you don't mind, I'll send you a couple of emails, maybe with a couple of other questions if you don't mind and, and thanks for coming. And, and I don't know if you know my sister-in-law, but she said I better behave tonight. Suzie Kyler?
Yes, I did.
She said I better behave tonight, so.
Oh, she told you I'd behave? I did want to just add just a little bit more so you know a little bit more about what's going on. I did check with the person who's running most of our vax clinics and she did share that all of our vaccine clinics for five to eleven have been almost a hundred percent full. So if we have five hundred slots, we've had four hundred and sixty to four hundred and ninety kids coming. So it's really positive and they're all showing up if they said they were coming. We've tried to make them events that are kid-friendly, we've tried to have juice boxes and some little snacks for them going out, and I think they've all been very successful and very well-received. I also wanted to say, she wanted me to share that you're probably, if you're going to look at, I know Carl's going to come behind me and talk about some other things that, that came forward, but if you're going to look at what schools might be closer to that eighty percent vax, you might want to look in the South Carroll area because she says that a lot of the kids that were coming, even though the events were all around the county, were from the southern end of the county, the zip code. So we can probably pull some of that data for you also. In my meeting with the secretary and the deputy secretary of health today, they did share that of the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand people that are unvaccinated in the state of Maryland, they know that two hundred and fifty thousand of them are from the Medicaid population, and they have been meeting with the MCOs and telling the MCOs they needed to step it up. They also know that of the hospitalizations that are taking place, two-thirds of those hospitalizations for COVID are Medicaid population and that seventy-five percent of those are unvaccinated. So they're also telling the, the MCOs that they need to step up their efforts. They did say that over the last three weeks that they've been meeting with them, they've made significant progress and each week there's been about five more percent vaccinated. So I think you're going to see a lot more pressure from not just, you know, private insurance and on Medicaid and on other agencies to make sure that these vaccinations are out there and people are talking to their healthcare providers and the healthcare providers are approaching. The efforts that are out there are everywhere. The behavioral health providers are being tasked with having to look at their unvaccinated population and have those conversations with their clients that are coming in. So we're trying desperately to get as many people vaccinated as we can.
Ms. Herbert.
Yes, thank you for coming. I was December second at the virtual meeting and I was questioned with your letter from the health department. And the one thing was that children from age five, eleven have just started to get vaccinated and that doses were limited, but I also sent with them the information that Ed had given us with all of our, working with you, the schools and the fire halls, that we have set up though, all these vaccination dates and that they can go to their physicians. And I do know that Mr. Kyler's son manages CVSs and I do know if you call in there, you can get that. And they wanted to know why that statement was in there when we, then I showed them that, well, we are working on this, so you know, it's.
They were set up, but they, we hadn't even started vaccinating when.
Right. And I told them that, yes, we are making this available and it, and I wanted to make sure that they understood that, and that's why I gave them that date of June third as an off-ramp because the children would have time to get their vaccinations, both of them, over the, you know, December and have the time for January. So I was just, I was just concerned.
Remember that you get a first vaccine, a second vaccine, and it's two weeks before you get full immunity. So you need, what's that, five weeks total? Correct, first week, third week, two more weeks, five weeks total. And those clinics go through the end of December.
Right, and I do understand that, but we are making it available that, that they can come get them. And the other thing is, and I am so grateful, when I say going to visit grandparents in Carroll County, you can go visit your grandparents because our vaccination rates are very, very high in Carroll County. And I just want to thank everybody that got those and that they can, I mean, you can visit. It's not a negative because people in Carroll County are doing the right thing and I thank you. So I just wanted to make mention that, you know, I thought they needed to know that we are proactive, so with the state department.
We are looking to see if we want to do another round around, you know, as the health department around the county to make sure that people have access. We know that some of the physician offices have been limited in what they've been able to get. We've been told that not to worry anymore, that the vaccine is fully available now. The, the issue was manufacturing it in the dose level that was needed for the kids. We were not allowed to use what we had and just give a smaller dose. We had to wait for the new vials to come out and all the, the information to get to people and they have to take classes on it online to be able to run those clinics. So that was part of our.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people understood that I, we had information and I wanted to make sure that when, what I said was, I had information to, to back it up. And thank you very much for coming tonight.
No problem.
And, and, yeah, thank you for coming. I have one, one concern moving forward and, and I'm afraid you guys won't be able to have a say in it and I'm afraid you guys won't be able to have a say in it, but you listen to Dr. Fauci and I won't editorialize, they want so badly to say fully vaccinated includes the booster. These kids are just catching up and they're just getting vaccinated and we're trying not to quarantine them. If they jump to that and don't give us a phase-in period, that's going to kill our quarantine because we, we need the kids considered fully vaccinated. So if there's anything you could do for that, and then Ms. Savigny has more comments.
Oh, no, I was, I want to talk about quarantines later, but it can be in a different context, so.
Mr. Kyler. I don't, I don't know if this is, who has dealings or who sets this, these rules, but I do know that we had eight young ladies in a high school and one of them tested positive and then that one, and the other ones all tested negative and they are avail, they can go back to school, but they can't sit in the stands and watch their teams play. So do you make those rules or are we making those rules? Does anybody know?
That doesn't sound like a rule that we have.
But that's what, okay, that's why I'm asking because they were told that they cannot even sit in the stands and watch.
I would direct that, whoever sent that to Mr. Streeker.
All right.
Ms. Herbert, I, I guess the way you're describing it.
I didn't understand that and that's why I wanted to bring it up.
I don't understand it either, but I can tell you that I, I guess you're, that maybe in reference, we did have a, we have a JV basketball team.
Yes.
That has been shut down at the direction of the health department because it's reached outbreak status. I believe there's four positive cases on the JV team. So that, that team has been shut down. And because that team has been shut down, we, we did implement a version of what the Maryland Department of Health offers of a test-to-stay program for those athletes.
Okay.
So we're working on for indoor extracurricular activities when we have students, as we have the resources available to do that, if we were able to have a nurse, so we actually had a nurse go up and test at the school site with parent consent and permission.
Okay.
So that, one, we could control the spread of COVID and identify if there was more on the teams. When we were able to do that, we were then also allowed, any of those students who participated in the testing to stay in school as long as they consent to giving a, a second test, which I think we're planning to do tomorrow if we have the staffing because we need to test days five and seven. And if we're successful with that, then those students can remain in school. So our intent is they can stay in school, but the health department, because of the outbreak status of that team, has shut the team down. Now, when we say shut the team down, that's from competing. I, I don't, this attending, not attending, I, I don't quite understand where that came from, but I would say that from my perspective, we're allowing the students, these students to attend school so they're not quarantined. So I would expect that students who are participating in school would be able to attend evening activities. They wouldn't be able to practice because the team isn't.
Well, I understand that. They were shut down from going to watch the games.
And I think, and they couldn't practice, which I didn't know the team was shut down.
The reason there's no practice is there's no team.
Right, no, no, right, I understood that.
But I, this is the first I've heard, the concept that they wouldn't be able to attend a practice and I.
No, it wasn't the practice, it was like watching the game.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry.
Okay, watching like the vars, the other game, the vars game.
Correct. My perspective is they are quarant, they, these students are released, they're in our test-to-stay program. If they can attend school, they should be able to attend extracurricular activities.
Just probably miscommunication and we got to fix it.
First I heard of it, ma'am.
There you go. That's why, you know, I just thought, I don't know if Suzie, if the health department went over and shut it down or we did or, you know, I wanted to ask.
We work together very closely.
Right, we all work together.
If we see something where they shouldn't have been quarantined or they shouldn't have been, then we will contact and say, hey, you applied this rule the wrong way and make sure that kids get to stay in school if they can.
It's, it's, it's not easy.
And we're, this is a new thing, like we, we just decided, given the status and our, our desire for students to be in-person learning and have access to their education, which as we all prioritize the most, there is a provision within MDH to do test-to-stay and we had the resource to do it, so we, we're trying it. And, you know, as long as we have the resources to do it, meaning staff to be able to pull it off and the, the test kits, which we do have because of our test site that we have at Westminster.
Right.
We're going to try to do that as much as we can to keep kids in school.
Well, I thank you and, you know, we just might need to do a little communication fix up there. Thank you both.
Ms. Pataglia.
So I'm looking back at the post-vaccination case rates and I guess it says here, not fully vaxxed, which means they've probably received one so far?
This slide?
I believe it's two behind that.
I do apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm down, I'm. There's vaccination rates.
Uh, let's see, that one, yes, yes.
The number of cases that we're getting per hundred thousand.
So these are, these are, because it says at the bottom, not fully vaccinated, so I want to make sure that's one vaccination?
No, it's probably zero or one.
Correct. It's probably not vaccinated or really vaccinated. And then the other number in orange are fully vaccinated.
Okay, so these are included in our case rate in the county?
Correct.
Shouldn't they be separate? Like, I mean, and, I mean, that's the thing, like.
Case rate are you referring to? I'm sorry.
So you're.
Overall, how many, that's why you see both, whether they were vaccinated or not.
Okay, so is, but is this all being included when it comes down to our case rate when someone says, oh, you're in high transmission? Because I'm looking at and I'm saying, well, if they're vaccinated, they shouldn't be included.
Well, I think this, the purpose of this slide is to show that people vaccinated are getting it versus how many aren't.
But showing you breakthrough cases.
Right.
Breakthrough cases are people who have underlying medical conditions or immunocompromised in other ways that cause them to be, a vaccine to be less effective. The key here to remember is these people are not dying now.
But I think, that's the thing, because.
They're vaccinated and they're not dying, and that's what we want to prevent, is deaths.
But I think that's going to be my question, like going forward as far as with whatever the state wants to put in place is we have to be at a low, you know, a low rate for the CDC, but if, if our case rate's high because of the vaccinated with the breakthrough cases, then we'll never get anywhere. That's what I'm thinking, like those two things should be completely different.
And, and see how that's calculated, but what I've been told is the not fully vaccinated, we're seeing that the majority of people are not vaccinated at all.
Yeah, because if, if they're being included in total cases per hundred thousand per week, that's making things look worse than they really are if the vaccinated are included in that. I mean, I, to me, it should just be the unvaccinated is the total case rate because those are the ones that are going to, it would be any type of issues or problems.
But they still can transmit the disease to other people.
I think that's going to be our problem.
And the transmissibility and whether or not we're in a high or moderate or a low rate of transmission, you're looking at how many people can infect other people. So it's not going to matter whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated.
So basically in two years, we're still going to be in high transmission rate because it doesn't matter.
I don't think so.
I think what you might be getting at though, Ms. Pataglia, is that you have, all the people that are getting it have natural immunity, right? So the unvaccinated who get it are having natural immunity and so should those be included in the percentage of folks that are vaccinated because they have the, it's like, do we want to be looking at percentages with immunity rather than percentages vaccinated?
That would be very difficult because the natural immunity wanes after ninety days.
That's actually not been scientifically proven. The, the, the CDC is saying they're only giving you credit for the ninety days. It's been shown that it lasts significantly longer than that.
But it drops faster than if you're vaccinated and you have the boosters to, to push up our, our, our level of immunity when you're, you get COVID and then you are exposed for the period of time goes by. So where we were with two shots, we were still, I don't know, seventy-six, eighty-six percent, and then the booster shot us back up into the nineties. If you're, have COVID and then you, time goes by, that level that you have of response can go down into the. can go down into the fifties or the forties. So it's natural immunity, yes, and there is a chance that if your body saw that disease again, that it would replicate those antibodies and fight that. But it does wane over time, and it wanes faster than if you are vaccinated and boosted.
I, could you, would you humor me and send me the, the studies that you're reciting? Because I've seen many studies that refute what you're saying, so, okay, thank you. So, Mr. Kyler, I did want to ask a question about the, the quarantining dashboards, because we had several folks from Citizen Participation who were talking about that. And, and I know that we had asked those kinds of questions months ago, where like, once someone is quarantined, what percentage of those folks actually end up with a positive test, right? So like, are the quarantines effective? And I know that we said at some point that that's difficult to track. I, I don't think that that's something necessarily that the Health Department would track, but it, it feels like something we should be trying to figure out, right? Like, it, it's data that we should be trying to determine. Because if we're quarantining, you know, seven hundred kids right now, but it turns out that only, you know, one percent of the kids who are quarantined actually ever test positive, that has to have an impact on how we administer the quarantining rules.
So I, it's a lot to unpack there. So I guess the first thing I would say is that we have had outbreaks. We have several outbreaks, and as I described in our basketball team. So an outbreak is, is an example of students who have been placed in quarantine, and then they've turned positive. So anytime you're hearing that we have outbreaks, which is reported on the state's dashboard, all outbreaks that are reported are cases where students who were on line lists in school, like, so we have, when we have an out, when we have a case, we have identified a student who's positive and they're close contacts. Anyone on that line list that turns positive, now we've determined it's an outbreak. That process takes some time, because, you know, first of all, the student was symptomatic, they're positive. We learn about their positive test, now we put kids in quarantine, and then we monitor for symptoms, if we learn if they get tested, if they're positive. One of the biggest challenges, I think, with the quarantine, from a clarification perspective, and I'll use Northwest Middle as a great example, when you look at the state dashboard, it'll list, I, I don't remember the last name, but twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And I think that that's the way the state has chosen to push that data out. That is not how many students are associated with a current outbreak. That's how many students for this school year have been engaged, have been involved in an outbreak. So I think it's a bit misleading when you see twenty-seven. So we're, our schools, when we learn of an outbreak, we send communication to the school, to the families, and say, we've had an outbreak. We don't define two, three, five in that. But we do let the community, you know, we advise the community that's on the outbreak, they could look at the dashboard. And a lot of the questions we get back are, oh, my gosh, there's twenty-eight kids, or thirty kids that have COVID. And we're like, no, there, there's not. It could be as little as two, but the state's dashboard reports that way.
Yeah, I agree with you that it's misleading, and I think the Carroll County Times even completely inaccurately reported it.
Northwest Middle shows right now at thirty-eight, and I think Sandy Mount twenty-seven. But if you go to the individual schools, they have eight, you know? So, yes, yes, it's, it's very deceiving, and we can't control that, I assume.
Correct, Mr. Kyler. And, and a couple of things, and I think part of this is, is reality of manpower. I just want to be full disclosure, like, we're stretched in our personnel to, to do what we're doing. And, and I also think it's important that we, like, with Sandy Mount showing eight or Northwest, those are current active cases. So that's a student who has currently active COVID positive. And that student may show on the dashboard for two consecutive weeks, depending upon when they were tested positive, and when they become a symptom, cleared that, that window, and are able to return to school. So that's to show the amount of COVID within the school community. That's the intent of our dashboard. It is not new cases at the school. So we, you know, we work with our nurses, in addition to the care that they give for students every day, they need to make sure that they've updated the, where we put the data as they track that student, as well as creating line lists that go to the Health Department. I know Ms. Doyle's team shares some of the same workload stress of, you know, we get the information to them, they then need to contact people. So there's, there's a lot to it, and we, and I would, I'm confident that you support this. We, we certainly spend our time caring for kids over getting the numbers and, and the, the computer updated. So we want to focus our, our time in schools with serving our students, making sure that their health needs are met. And there are occasions where those line lists don't get to Sue's team, maybe as quickly as they could. But families often get concerned because they hear, like, why am I hearing about it now? Because it takes not only our time to put it in, but it takes time for a student to become positive, because kids aren't coming to school with COVID, thankfully, in general, they're not. They're coming in, they have a sniffle, they're here for a while, three days later, they get tested, and then we realize, oh, we go back to the date of onset of symptoms, we identify the kids, they've been in school. So that's the operational procedure, and, and it does add some confusion. But at, at the end of the day, we're trying to keep our kids in school as much as they can. You know, we, we understand that parents can't, we, we say to parents, you can come pick your kid up now. They're identified as close contact, they'll be placed in quarantine. You can come pick them up now. We also understand the inconvenience that has on parents to be able to stop what they're doing at ten AM and run to the school and pick their child up. We would like them to, we encourage them to, but if they're unable to, we just ask them to keep them home the next day, and then we let them know the quarantine. But we're also placing a lot fewer kids in quarantine, although our numbers are up because our cases are up. Because of, you know, what Mr. Singer agreed, and then the state followed suit with the option of, as long as students are in universal mask settings and they're wearing masks, they don't have to be in quarantine. We're really down to lunch, and now with, with athletics, it's spinning up a little bit in some areas of sports, particularly indoors. So I, I hope that answers some of those questions that have come up about quarantine and, you know, the data that we're showing. If, if we could hire, you know, ten extra people to crunch numbers and, and pile into data, we, we don't have the manpower. And, and we're not going to sacrifice student service to kids and their medical needs to making sure that we're getting the data as quickly as possible. And I know that that's something you all support.
Yeah, and I, and I totally understand and respect that, Mr. Strecker. But if, if you think about it from a, the, the total number of outbreaks to date, all you need to do is look at the total number of kids that you've quarantined. It's not like we're asking to, to track something completely different. We're saying, what is the total of the number of kids that we've put in quarantine today? And we can divide the number, the total number of outbreaks to date by that number, that, that's.
I think we have that, honestly, because of the way the state reports their quarantine, which we just express frustration about, we can simply go into that and total up all the kids that are in quarantine, the thirty-whatever at, you know, at North Carroll Middle. And we look at our dashboard and see how many kids we've been placed in quarantine, and we could somewhat arrive at that ratio.
Not current totals, though, but to date, like, the total number of quarantines that have happened to date. It's just a cumulative number.
So that would be, I think, a matter of looking at our dashboard now and adding up all the quarantines that are, you know, we have that on our dashboard. I don't think it goes back to the first week we started publishing, but the dashboard, I don't remember, I don't have in front of me, when we started publishing the quarantines.
It was a few weeks in, but Carl, some of those quarantines stretch over two reporting periods, so that, that would be a little bit.
Now, the quarantines, I do not think the quarantines do. The quarantine students do not stretch over two reporting periods, I don't believe.
And, and you might have, you, you definitely made me think. You might have just answered the question a little bit. So let's say ten kids from East Middle are quarantined today. If two of them show positive, they're going to be on our dashboard as East Middle positive cases. Not, it doesn't matter they're quarantined, if they're positive, they count.
Yes.
So, so really, if, if seven hundred and ninety-three are quarantined, or if we look at an individual school on the quarantine numbers, if we look at the cases, and it's eight cases, and it's two hundred quarantined, it's eight of two hundred.
Right.
You know, so maybe that information is there. And I, and I, I know everybody's going crazy with all this stuff. I think, unfortunately, our frustration now is it, it appears the state wants us in masks for two years, meeting numbers that aren't even reasonable, and masks that, again, they help. I don't, I don't want to fight tonight, but they're not effective. And we need data, we need something to try to justify getting back to mask optional. I mean, liberal Colorado, a school system there just did it. All Florida's doing it. It's, it's, it's happening throughout the country with numbers higher than ours, and it's working. We're not asking for something, we don't want any more kids sick either.
No.
But, but, and whether, like, you guys were talking, if we want to get the hospitalizations, if we want to get, you know, if we just track case numbers, it, it's, we, we haven't been below fifty per hundred thousand since, like, August. You know, it's just not going to happen soon. It's unrealistic. And, and so we're probably all frustrated, but, yeah, we understand, yeah, we, I mean, we talked earlier.
The data is just.
We're having trouble finding enough bus drivers and mustaches, enough nurses. We don't have extra people. I, I understand, but we're, we're frustrated too, because.
State keeps changing the goalposts.
Yes, yes, and, and, and nobody in this room can change what those and the delegates are going to make as the next law. So, but thank you.
But that's, that's why I was asking about the, how the case rate would show with, regarding, you know, where we're going to be in transmission rate area, because one thing could put us in, in one category, and another thing could put us in another. And it's, and I think it's, it's important to decipher the difference, you know? The unvaccinated ones that keep that rate there, and then the on, the, the ones that are vaccinated, it could be a little different, and combining them obviously makes a big hill of a difference, so.
Was actually very concerned, or confused, maybe, by the fact that they went with eighty percent instead of seventy percent, when seventy percent has been the herd immunity level that's been preached from the beginning. So when I saw eighty percent, I was like, is there something that I haven't been told yet? Because we've been told consistently, if we got to seventy percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, so I'm, if I were going to fight anything on that, I might ask why that decision was made and why eighty percent was chosen and not seventy percent. That's just my opinion. When I saw it, I said, oh, that must be a typo, and then I flipped to the next thing, and I said, no, it says eighty. So I, I was a little confused by that, because seventy percent has been the benchmark from the beginning, and that's been what we've tried to achieve. I think that's where we're close to in the community overall.
I like your thinking. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Ms. Doyle. I, I mean, I'd like to suggest, I mean, I'm not sure, it's a relatively new thing, right, of, of the information that the state put out, but I, I think at some point, we have to discuss what we want to do to address it, right? Even though it might not have any impact, we at least have to.
Dr. Lockard sent us an email, kind of updating where it was, saying, we're looking at it, and, and I don't even know if we've seen the whole rule yet. And, and I keep hearing changes of longer and this, and of course, it still has to be approved, but yes, I agree. We got to, as soon as we can get that information, we, we've just got to get looking at it. I mean, again, our job is to help twenty-five thousand kids get an education, not, not wear this, you know? And, and I know it's frustrated indoor, outdoor, six feet, and no mask, but we, we got to look at it. So thank you, and, and I love that last comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you come back.
Okay, board member activities and correspondence. Who wants to start? Dr. Dorsey, you ready? You haven't said a lot tonight. You ready for your turn?
Yes, I'm ready. Activities for December twenty twenty-one. I participated in or attended the following activities. On November twelfth, I had a MAB, or I attended a MAB Board Academy on what the blueprint means for collective bargaining. And the information was presented by Mr. O'Mealy, and I found it to be very relevant and helpful, and, believe it or not, pretty easy to follow. So again, if that is ever offered again, I certainly would recommend that to fellow board members. On November seventeenth, I met with my MAB Conference Planning Committee, and during this meeting, we debriefed the evaluation results from our twenty-twenty-one MAB Annual Conference. For that conference, we had one hundred twenty-nine conference attendees, and that was not including the MAB staff, exhibitors, and guests. And as I had commented early, earlier, I think everyone certainly was glad and appreciative that we were in person for the conference. With the survey that followed the conference, there was a ninety-three point sixty-two percent overall satisfaction of the conference, based on the follow-up survey. And our guest speakers, as well as our student panel, all received positive comments. So again, thanks to Devon Chief for participating on that student panel for us. On November twenty-ninth, I attended a MAB Budget Committee meeting. And for that meeting, we heard an overview of operations and trends, and reviewed the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three MAB budget. That afternoon, I attended a MAB Equity Committee meeting, and this committee continued working on scenarios that will be included in the MAB Workbook on Equity. And finally, on December one, I attended the MAB Board of Directors meeting. And that same day, I attended, along with my fellow board members, the East Middle School Groundbreaking Ceremony. And certainly, that was a very well-structured and positive ceremony for the new East Middle School and Westminster community. And there was a lot of excitement in the air as work is underway to replace the nineteen thirty-six facility. So we certainly thank our staff, Mr. Prokop, Mr. Marks, and everyone in the Facilities Department. And I know it's been a team effort to get us to this point. And I just wanted to comment that, that particular day during the groundbreaking ceremony, the building supervisor sort of stood off at a distance. And, you know, he was very in tune with watching everything that was happening and going on. So I went over and greeted him and had a great conversation with him, and, you know, certainly thanked him for all he's doing to keep the current East Middle operational, because I know it certainly has its challenges. But then we talked about, you know, the, the inside glimpse that he's going to have into the new building, and, you know, getting to see where everything is going to be from the ground up. So again, that was just a, an interesting conversation, and I certainly appreciated having that with the building supervisor that day. So again, you know, those were my activities for this month. And again, I thought the, the groundbreaking ceremony was a very, very positive culminating activity for me.
Ms. Herbert?
It's been a long night now.
No? DaVinci? I'm sorry, student representative, I, I don't want to be too informal.
Um, so I unfortunately was not able to attend the November sixteen CCSJ Executive Board Meeting. I had an AP Chem test at the same time that I couldn't miss. But as Jamie's report stated, we have been prepping for our modified December General Assembly and upcoming SROB elect elections in February. Being in this position and sitting here on this board is one of the most valuable experiences I've had. And I highly, highly encourage students who are interested in advocacy and student voice to apply. If you have any questions at all, please do not hesitate to reach out to me through email at stewrep@carrollk12.org, or social media on Instagram at CCPSSROB, and Twitter at CCPS underscore SROB. Last Wednesday, I had the privilege and opportunity of attending the East Middle School Groundbreaking Ceremony. And I wanted to thank Principal Carver for giving that really informative tour of the middle school after. I love history. It's always been one of my favorite subjects. It was amazing to be in a place of Carroll County's living history. Yesterday, I attended and played in the Liberty High School Jazz and Pool Orchestra Concert as the viola section leader. And tonight is the Win Ensemble and Phonic Band Concert that's happening right now. It was our first winter concert since December two thousand and nineteen, so it's been two years. And it was wonderful to make music and celebrate art again. To all the other instrumental and vocal ensembles in the county, I want to congratulate you all on the start of your winter concert season, and I hope everyone has an amazing winter break.
Thank you. Ms. Savigny?
Thanks, Mr. Kyler. Just a couple of quick things. So, you know, I, I too was at the East Middle Groundbreaking Ceremony, and it was very exciting times, because, you know, Marsha and I, I think, have been dealing with it the longest as board members with that particular situation, and it is just exciting to be able to finally break ground for the community with that new school. So it's been a very exciting year with Career and Tech and, and East Middle going on after the, the long-awaited projects. The one other thing that, that I did attend this month was the, the Teachers Advisory Council, which was held at Outdoor School this year. I, I just want to make a couple of comments, because Mr. Anderson, you know, it was, it was a very fun, enlightening time. We actually went through an exercise that we've been sworn to secrecy. But it was really an amazing experience, and it just backs up everything that I've said in the past about the Teachers Advisory Committee, where it's just. in the past about the Teachers Advisory Committee where it's just a fantastic group of individuals and educators in our system. It's so exciting to hear all of their thoughts and, and the things that they do in their classrooms every day for the benefit of our kids. I just want to say that's an outstanding committee and I'm honored to be a part of it. And the last thing is the Audit Committee Meeting, which happened yesterday. And, you know, with Ms. Harrison taking over as our internal auditor, she, she's really not missed a beat. So I just want to say kudos to, to Chris and his staff and, and Ms. Harrison for, you know, with all the, the changes and everything for keeping that going the way they have. Thanks.
Ms. Patagia?
You know, we attended the groundbreaking ceremony for East Middle School and I'm very excited for, to see that happening. You know, that was something that I've been fighting for, for a long time and discussing and out there in the community about. So I'm, I'm very excited to see that's happening. We had the budget session on Monday here. I attended the Curriculum Committee, which was really good. We, you know, discussed an upcoming course we're going to be looking at and various ideas that are going on. Personally, I'm, you know, I'm getting ready to end my Women's Studies class. This is my last week for that one. Eight weeks goes by very fast and I'll be starting my next psychology class in January. We do have winter concerts coming up for all of our schools. Some have already happened and some are getting ready to happen this week and next week. So I wish everyone luck on those. And apparently I'm the only one that likes ugly sweaters, so it's all good. It's okay. So yeah, I mean, you know, just we're getting ready for, for the holiday and I want everyone to be safe and just be safe out there. I will address some of the bullying things that we have heard and, you know, I do want to talk about later on, you know, we look, talk about the bullying policy and everything. But, you know, I will say, what's really sad, you know, we have students and we've had parents and, you know, addressed the issues. And then we still have people that sit here in the audience and laugh at those people. And I think that's absolutely disgusting. So maybe, you know, here we, we have people who are saying, please stop the bullying. And yet they continue either sit online and bully when you have people talking about it and they continue to sit here and laugh. And I think that's, that's really, really disturbing. So just wanted to bring that up.
I took part in MAB legislation meetings, a couple other MAB meetings as Dr. Dorsey covered. We are members of MAB and I think we make very good use of them and, and they're, they're great to be involved with. East Middle, everybody's talked about that in the tour. We got to do the tour together and I think, I think you saw some chairs and desks older than you. And, and, and just, just to put things in perspective, I'll say me, I won't say anybody else sitting up here, but the Mayor of Westminster talked and we found out she was born when most of us were like seniors in college. And, and to the right of me, I've got some people that graduated from that building. And, and I just want to thank Dr. Lockard, the Construction Department and all the administration at East Middle for setting up that tour. We didn't have a lot of people, but they, they got a lot of questions about some of the history. And, and I think there'd be many more tours before that building gets torn down. And people want bricks, they want pieces and, and it's, it's such a great activity and it's so nice when we have so much stuff going on that kind of isn't fun some days that, that we had a fun evening there. So thank you. Ms. Herbert, last chance? No?
I, I do want to, I want to make sure those marble steps are taken care of.
They're going to be used.
Dr. Lockard, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I want to congratulate William Rains, a sophomore at Westminster High School. William qualified for the National Educators Rising Competition. His excellent showing ranks him in the top 10 competitors across Maryland. In his speech, William articulated why he's interested in pursuing a career in education and illustrated the power of being an educator. Educators Rising National Competitions are performance-based competitive events in which aspiring educators demonstrate their knowledge, skills and leadership in education. With a blend of individual and team events, competitions are authentic, engaging opportunities for rising educators to stretch their creativity, commitment and professionalism. So we say congratulations to you, William, and we would be very happy to welcome you back to our system as a teacher in the future. I want to congratulate Mike Fleming. Mr. Fleming's an English teacher and wrestling coach at Westminster High School, recently inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame for his lifetime service to wrestling. Mike has an extensive background in wrestling which prepared him to teach excellent technique and raise the level of all of his athletes, both novices and longtime varsity wrestlers. He previously taught English and coached wrestling at Liberty High School. During his time at Liberty, his record included an outstanding 254 wins. He moved to Westminster High School in 2015 where his teams have racked up another 103 wins. He's produced 31 county champions, 12 regional champions. He's qualified 64 wrestlers for the state tournament where 12 have become state finalists and five were state champions. Pretty impressive career and a resume there. So we congratulate you, Mike Fleming, and thank you for the significant impact you've made on your students and most especially your wrestlers. We also want to congratulate the South Carroll Football Team. The Cavaliers participated in the state championship at the stadium at the Naval Academy. Mr. Streaker, Ms. McCabe and I attended along with Mr. Duffy. And an outpouring of community. It was a significant crowd there to cheer on South Carroll. And while the final score didn't quite go in their favor, they have nothing to be disappointed about in terms of an undefeated regular season and how far they achieved throughout the, the playoffs. They've certainly made us proud and have lots to hold, hold their heads high about. So we congratulate the South Carroll Football Team. All the coaches, volunteers, folks in the Athletic Department there, the administrators, teachers, everybody really putting in a lot of work to support them. So we, we thank them. And finally, I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone.
And, and on with Mike Fleming. His photo and his bio is on display in the Hall of Fame in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and you can see it online. It is, it's quite an accomplishment for him to be inducted into that.
Sure is.
We have reports now, construction report. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. This is our monthly construction report. As always, Mr. Marks is available for questions or comments. Thank you again, Mr. Marks, for your help with our groundbreaking last week. As many board members mentioned, with county and city Westminster officials that helped us with that as well. It was a great celebration and a great way to commemorate the project, which we've heard about, has been a true collaboration of our agencies and our partners at the state as well. So with that, the construction report with any questions? No questions?
Sorry. No questions? We'll, we'll go on to.
Not from Ms. Savigny?
No.
Holy.
Are you, are you saying you want to come up and say something?
I feel bad. Did you stick around just for that? Let me ask a question. All right.
Onto the COVID-19 Fiscal Report. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. This is our monthly COVID Fiscal Report. Mr. Hartlove has added that column so we can note specific changes from month to month. And as you can see, the, the changes relate to ELO programs and student health. So Mr. Hartlove is, is available. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? We will go on to the Blueprint Imphamation Update. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. So we reported last month that we would focus on overall blueprint implementation timelines this month. And Mr. O'Neill is here for a brief update.
Thank you and good evening. And what we've provided you in addition to the cover sheet on the screen is an internal document that we've, we've created here in Carroll and have been using as a reference for the, for the subcommittees of Dr. Lockard's overall committee. It's, it's broken out by the five policy areas and tries to, to give some of the benchmarks for each fiscal year for, for each of those policy areas. I'll tell you, as our designated coordinator, I attend all the state coordinator meetings. Every county has some version of this tool and so does the state and so does MAB and so does PZAM. And there's, there's good things about each, each of these tools and then there's, you know, there's always something missing. So I would say there's no ideal tool. We use this mainly as a reference point, but we couldn't think of a better way to try to, try to give you something that you could look at and ask us any questions you wanted to about some of the, the key benchmarks. The only thing I'll say other than to take questions is if you go to the last policy area, I think we referenced this slightly during the work session the other night in that first column for fiscal year 22 under the Governance and Accountability Policy Area. That, that comprehensive state implementation plan, which the Accountability Implementation Board is supposed to set guidelines for by February, and then the State Department of Ed would take those guidelines or take that model and turn out to each of the local school systems, some sort of framework for each of us, each local school system to develop our own comprehensive blueprint implementation plan. That's kind of the key driver here. And ultimately, pretty much everything else you see in the blueprint or on this chart or in whatever reference you want to look at is going to fold up or be part of your comprehensive implementation plan that the state would ultimately approve. There is some question that given the delay in getting everything up and running, including the AIB, that there may be legislation in this coming session that would push back the timelines a little bit. I think that there's some wisdom in that and I think we would welcome that. We'll, we'll keep you up to date on that because as with all of this, some of these benchmarks are subject to change. And with that, we'll take questions and the, the chairs of the other policy areas are all here as well.
Ms. Herbert?
Mr. O'Neill, this is very nice. I do like this, but I'm just going to make a comment. Number one, I don't see how they'll ever be able to stick to all those dates that they have written down in stone. Number two, I don't know where all this money's coming from. And number three, if we have to hire all those teachers to fill that 40% that they are not, they are doing professional activities, I, I don't know, you know, and I'm just being realistic. I don't know how we'll ever be able to fill all those spots and because everybody else will be doing the same thing. And the other 23 counties will be, will, will all be fighting over teachers and then we will be fighting for money over the state to, to, to continue all these mandates. So good luck with this. It's, it's hard. This is, this is going to be very hard.
And, and it will change.
It certainly will.
Any other questions?
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on to.
The gambling took effect, so that might be more money coming in, right?
Yeah. Transportation Services Benchmarks Report. Dr. Lockard?
Mr. Kyler, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the car.
On that last item, John, can I just ask, is this kind of the, is this the process that we're going to follow for an update on a, on a monthly basis? Just kind of follow along on this timeline and?
We can do that. I think what we laid out initially gets us through January. So we, we propose to present this timeline to you tonight to give you sort of a frame of reference at this month's meeting. And in January, we propose to present on funding under the blueprint, which we hope will be much clearer once the governor releases his budget early in session. Beyond January, we hadn't defined any topics for the, for February and beyond, so we can adjust to whatever pleases the board and serves your interest if you'll.
Okay. So I guess we can actually just kind of keep this as our ready reference, right? Like we can always kind of refer back to this as, okay, this is the timeline again as we're picking off these other items on a monthly basis.
Until the timeline changes.
Right. Until such time as this document needs to change. Right? Okay. All right. Thanks, John.
Sure.
Dr. Lockard?
Okay, next up is the Transportation Services Benchmark Report. So every December, we present the board with a benchmark report we use to monitor our overall program efficiency. There's Mr. Hardesty. He's here with highlights and answering any questions.
Good evening, board members.
Yes.
And Dr. Lockard. Normally, we look forward to this benchmarking report because it gives us an excellent method of comparing ourselves to ourselves the year before to see if we've gotten more efficient or inefficient. It also allows us to compare to national standards and also standards that have been developed within the state of Maryland based upon the other 17 counties, other 16 counties, we're, we make 17, that use a reimbursement formula of some type to compensate contractors. So I'm going to quickly go through some of the more important slides. As we all know, last year, and this, this report covers the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. And we know we started out the 2021 school year with only transporting a few students. We graduated and, and went back and forth for a time in terms of the number of students that were attending school and that those figures obviously affected our ridership. So the numbers that we're reporting here for ridership primarily were taken from our March manifests, which are the last manifests that contractors normally submit to us. So if we could, unless there are questions on this first page, we could go to the next slide, please, our ridership.
Mr. Hardesty, could I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
You, you have that the miles paid were, were 5.2 million. Do you have, do you have any feel for how many of those were actually driven?
We've, we've thought about that. I mean, we could probably prorate those miles based upon the same percentage of students that, that actually, you know, were riding. But it would be, we, we could get that data. We have GPS on the buses now, although at the time, school, this school year started July 1, that they were not completely installed. And we still have a few buses that we're having some issues with, with the GPS, but we could get close to it. We also take the mileage at each inspection. So from the summer to the fall, fall to the spring, spring to the summer. So we could get total miles that way, but take into account, that includes all of our spare buses, all of our activity buses, athletic buses. So this mileage here is strictly to and from school. My guess is maybe a third to a half of that number. Because it was later in the school year before we started to go A-Day, B-Day and skip Wednesdays. And it was very late in last school year when we started going back in full. And we know ridership was very low. This, this next slide will show that the ridership from that March manifest is 8,654 students. So, you know, that's about a third of our total student population. And you can see how that ridership skewed the actual utilization. We plan our bus routes based upon 44 students for, for the high school buses, 58 for middle, 51 for, I'm sorry, 51 for middle and 58 for elementary. And, and so that gives us our maximum capacity utilization, but with only 8,600 students riding, you can see how that skewed our utilization numbers. Next slide, please. Special education, again, you can see that students transported was, were considerably less, although as a percent, maybe a little bit higher than the percent of regular ed students that were actually riding. And the cost per bus, you know, cost per student obviously went sky high because we have a fewer number of students with the same cost. Because we did reimburse, as we said earlier, we did reimburse contractors as if buses were running normally. We used the spring of 2020 manifest initially, then as we got into full operation later in the school year, contractors submitted new manifests and we paid for those. Buses that did not run, we did not pay fuel for. But, but driver salary, assistant salary, maintenance and the full PVA were all paid. So our costs are pretty much normal except for fuel. So a cost per bus, you're not seeing much of a change from year to year. The next slide, cost per student. That points out what I just said as to how, how the small number of students transported going into the same relative cost minus fuel skews that number as well. The slide here for fuel, you know, as we all know, diesel fuel right now is skyrocketing. It's, the last survey we did, I believe, was around $3.65 a gallon. But you can see what the rates were last year, much more favorable than what, what we're looking at now.
Mr. Hardesty, can you remind us what we're assuming in the budget for FY '23?
We have built that budget on $3.50 a gallon.
$3.50, okay.
And as you could see from those figures, it's been a while since the average cost of fuel even came close to that. In FY '19, it was $2.97. In FY '15, it was $3. of fuel even came close to that. In FY '19, it was $2.97. In FY '15, it was $3.17. Every year, other than those two, it was in that $2.50 or low $200, low $2 figures. Let's skip the PVA. We have a slide here for, you can, you can go to the next slide, please. Average daily miles, average daily hours per bus, that stayed pretty much the same, based upon what we were paying, not what buses were actually doing. We go to certified drivers, and there's a reduction of 28 drivers from the last report to this current report. So, again, that just points out that we're in need of drivers. So these were all certified drivers that either left the system, retired, and were not replaced at the same level. So we are actively trying to recruit, along with our contractors, and we're hoping to have a job fair very soon, working with Mr. Diaz, that might help in that regard.
Mr. Hardesty, what is the optimal, so with the number of certified drivers per bus that dropped to 1.42 for that past year, what does that number need to be? Does it need to be 1.5?
It needs to be higher, but I can't tell you exactly what it should be. Keep in mind, a lot of the figures, in these figures are part-time substitute drivers. So it might be a driver that's only driving the morning run, or the afternoon run, or just a couple days a week, or maybe every other week. So I would say that number needs to be considerably high, higher, to take into effect all the substitutes that we would need.
Mrs. Herbert.
How many new people have we certified this year so far?
I can get that number for you, Ms. Herbert. I can say, I can say we've probably averaged three to four per class. Now, the class right now has five in it, which is higher than we've had in some time. You know, we've had some, class last month, we only had one. We had like three cancellations, but only one attended. Now, we've had some as high, in years past, we've had 10 to 12, but we haven't seen those numbers in years.
Right. Now, yes. Now, do we take them to the testing area to get their CDL? Do we, do we use our, we, they drive that training bus out there to get their CDL?
Yes.
When they do their test?
They, they do the test with us.
Oh, okay.
We are...
The final test is with you all?
Yes. We, we are designated site by the MVA, one of a few counties that's been given that distinction. So we can do our own training and testing. However, the driver still must go to the MVA to get their license. We do, we cannot issue the license. So they take documentation that they passed, all the coursework, they've, they've passed our behind-the-wheel training.
And that's it. They take their paperwork then to the MVA?
Yes, and they can then get that. We also, we take drivers, whether they have their CDL, or, or they don't have their CDL, as trainees. And we help, to the extent we can, with those that do not have, I'm talking about a learner's permit, that don't have the learner's permit. So it, it's, it's a long process, as was mentioned earlier. It takes...
Because in February, that law's going to change, isn't it, that they're going to go to you all to, to get your, get the license, or to go to a private company to get a CDL? Am I correct on that?
Well, there are national standards in place that will go into place February 1st.
Right.
That dictate what is taught, and how long, how many hours are, and we're pretty much in compliance with that, but we have had to change our curriculum. So we're, our staff has been working hard with that.
Okay. So you're all up to date on that, because I knew something else new was coming in.
Right. It's ELDT, Entry Level Driver Training Mandates by the federal government for all DOT, including school buses.
As I said, I have my CDL, but I don't think I'm going to drive a bus.
So the chart on the right are driver salaries, and you can see that Carroll at $23.80. And keep, keep in mind, this is what we pay the contractor. This is not what the contractor necessarily would pay the driver, but that's entirely up to each contractor as to the salary that they determine for drivers.
And that's very confusing to us and the public, because when people see that, they think they get, the driver starts out at $23 and whatever cents an hour, and that's not true. I think it's 19-something now. I think next year, it'll be $20 and something that they'll get, but...
There are fixed charges attached.
Right. There's fixed charges that, and people don't understand that. And, you know, I'm a proponent for the school bus drivers, so if they got paid $22, $22 an hour, it'd be another $730. But, but we've got to figure out everybody else's money, too. So, but I just want to make sure that people understood that if you're going to go work and drive a bus in Carroll County, that's not what you're going to get right away.
But again, it's, it's up to each contractor to determine what they want to pay the driver.
And that's exactly right. Because we have really good contractors, but then every once in a while, so, and we, and I can't thank them enough for what they're doing.
Right. So, I did want to, can we go to the next slide, please? This, this shows, we do a comparison with all the other 16 counties that, that offer a reimbursement formula, for a theoretical bus route of five hours and 80 miles, and five and three-quarter hours and 80 miles. And then we compare ourselves to the other jurisdictions, the 17, as I mentioned, that have a formula. So you can see where Carroll ranks. Presently, under the current year formula, we rank eighth for both the five-hour 80 mile and the five and three-quarter 80 mile. I think Mr. O'Neal may have shared with you in closed session, a revised chart that plugs in figures for the proposed formula that is currently in your budget, does not include the additional items that the contractors have asked for. But that, plugging in those figures would bump up our ranking. Now, keep in mind, the other counties are going to enhance their figures as well. But it is rather impressive that we would jump up to number three in these categories, as opposed to number eight. So with that, I don't know if there are any questions regarding our, our safety. That's our last slide. But again, it's hard to draw conclusions from that without having the full fleet on the road every day. But we're still, I think we're, if we extrapolate those numbers, I think we're still doing pretty well.
How have the tracking people that pass the buses, since that was implemented and that was put on the buses, how's that worked out?
It's working out extremely well. I just got a report the other day, and I'd be happy to share that with the board, that shows year-to-date how many tickets, how many citations were, they classify a violation as a citation. It then goes an extra step, or as a violation, I'm sorry, and then it goes the extra step to be a citation issued by the sheriff's office. We have not reached the point where the revenue from those tickets matches what we owe Bus Patrol for the technology that we have. You know, we, we got additional technology as part of the agreement with, with GPS, Zonar, with our Push-to-Talk radio system. And, and so we haven't reached that threshold where there's any revenue coming back to the sheriff's office. However, in our contract, we, we do not have to meet that. If, if the end of five years, we haven't reached the revenue, there's no penalty. So, but in terms of catching flyby and violators, it's catching a lot. It's catching a lot. It's very, it's very surprising and very disheartening, but we hope over time, we see those numbers decline.
Well, I will say, my granddaughter's school bus has contributed to that a great deal, because I sit there and drop them off in the morning, and they pass the bus many, many, many times. And the sheriffs have gone to chase them. The sheriff has sat there and chased them. So I know my granddaughter's bus stop has been a moneymaker.
Well, it's 200, it's $250 for a violation.
That's money we don't want to make, though, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it works both ways, yes.
Yep. Ms. Patagio?
I know I had asked you at the work session regarding advertising and sponsorships of buses and stuff. And you had said that the MVA does not permit it. Now, please understand, I'm not, I'm not just talking about, like, wrapping the bus, make it look like it's Target, or the Ravens, or anything, like, like a small sticker, something of that nature to help offset costs. Can you explain why the MVA does not permit that?
Well, I can, I can tell you that they are very strict, even as, so far, and Mrs. Grody could, could tell you this, too. They're very strict about where a contractor can even place the name of their bus. And the theory being that they want the bus to be as visible as possible without any possible distractions.
Okay.
And, and so they've held tight to that, and we've, we've supported that, because we feel the same thing. We want, we don't want people fixated on an advertisement. We want them fixated on the lights of that school bus. And that's the rationale.
Okay. And I was just, just thinking of ways that always offset, like I said, you know, we talked about, we have advertisements on our fields at, at the schools, trying to offset costs and everything. Just thinking of some, even it's just our, our sports buses, you know, just some way, shape, or form to help offset. But it makes sense, and I understand it.
Well, it would be an excellent way to get word in the community, because buses are everywhere. So, but, no, they would not allow it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you. Strategic Plan, Pillar Four update. Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you. So December is the first month of the school year when we report on Pillar Four of our strategic plan. Pillar Four is also then reported later this spring. This December report focuses on the school security focus area and the Facility Condition Index, or FCI. Mr. Pierce and Mr. Prokop are here to offer some highlights and respond to questions. As you know, also for later in the spring, we're working on a climate and perceptual survey. And so that, that, those pieces of Pillar Four will come a little bit later this, this year. But for today, we'll focus on those first two areas. And it looks like Mr. Pierce is here first.
Good evening. So if you remember, a few months ago, we submitted a checklist of questions that we were moving forward with the safety evaluations for all the schools. And we met as a council, and we decided that we were going to take those questions, and in conjunction with working with Tech Services, create sort of an app, a sort of an application that would allow us to streamline and be able to track the data that we obtained from those evaluations. So I've met with Tech Services over the last couple of months, and we're in the developmental stages of that application. We hope to be able to get it rolled out at the beginning of next school year. That way, we can, in accordance with the, the Safe to Learn Act, which they recommend every three years, each school does an evaluation. The council decided that we wanted to do it annually. So once we get a coordinator, hopefully here in the next few minutes, then he will then be responsible for working with the administration, the building supervisor, myself, and we will, we will be able to conduct those evaluations, track the data. That data will communicate with security, facilities, and any other department that may be affected with, with the evaluation. So the, the goal was to be able to, to measure and be able to forecast what areas we need to improve in. And the only way to be able to do that was by, by having something that could track the data. So Tech Services has been working very hard on, on getting that done. And like I said, we hope to have it done soon, and start a pilot with it here in the near future, with the goal of beginning the evaluations at the beginning of next school year.
I do want to point out something, and thank you. But Jen Seashaw, thank you for sitting in. I don't think a lot of you know who she is, and that's why I'm mentioning that now, because he kept on saying IT-IT. There she is for real. She is for real, and she's not behind a computer or a phone. She is a real person. Okay? That she has a face. Well, kind of. I see her eyes. So, there you go. Thank you, Curtis.
Board members. So the, the second portion of the, of the pillar we're talking about tonight is the FCI. We've talked about the, the FCI when we talk about the capital plan, when we do the facilities master plan. And you can see, if comparing the charts before you, that it doesn't change dramatically year to year. It's a big-picture tool, so you wouldn't expect very much change. The charts that we've included do show the, the impact to the FCI, based on the approved capital plan currently in place. And as you can see, the, with, with the expenditures for East Middle and for Career and Tech, the, the FCI begins to decrease, approaching closely the, the goal of 31%. But as the, as that spending in the later years in the capital plan reduce somewhat, we, we start to creep back up. The next two charts, after, after that chart, show the amount of money that would take, on average. We've, we've seen this before. It's a, it's always a big number. But it's, it, that's, that's the kind of money we're going to have to invest in our, in our capital plan to, to achieve that FCI goal.
Ms. Vigney?
So, Bray, thanks for, thanks for reporting it this way. I think this is helpful, at least in, in the discussions that we need to have on a regular basis with the commissioners in terms of how much funding needs to go into the CIP every year in order to not have a deteriorating CIP, because I think what happened years and years ago, was that, that, that number just kept going up and up and up and up. And it's really just the, the East Middle and the Career and Tech project that are helping us bring it down. But you can see that it's going to continue to start creeping up and up again, until we actually have an, what, what was the statement that we, that we've been saying forever, is that, you know, if schools have a, a shelf life of 40 years before you need a modernization, that means, and we have 40 schools, that means you need to do one a year in order to keep up. Right? So, well, we did Career and Tech, and we did East Middle, but it, that doesn't mean that we're now suddenly done, right? Like, and, and I think that that's a message that we just need to keep continuing to drive home with the commissioners, just so that they understand it. And I think that the way that this is laid out really helps us with that. So, but I think when we look at the, the CIP requests every year, we have to keep that in mind. Like, okay, well, if we need to, if we need to put in 49 million every year in order to not fall behind, then what, what are we putting in this year? Right? I think if you look at the next couple of years of the CIP, we're not at that level. Right?
We want at least trying to maintain something.
Okay. And I assume there's no more public comments. We'll move into action items. The first action item, I need a motion to approve personnel appointments.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockhart.
Okay, board members, I have five recommendations for appointments this evening. First, I recommend Sean Connor, who is a social studies teacher at Oklahoma Road, to the acting assistant principal position at Oklahoma Road Middle. Next, Brian Elliott, to coordinator of school security, as Mr. Pierce referenced earlier, to fill that vacancy. Third, Jeff Hopkins, who's assistant principal at Oklahoma Road Middle, to acting principal at Oklahoma Road Middle. Next, Victoria Rennie, to school psychologist position. And finally, Aaron Scott, who's a school counselor at Mount Arrie Middle, to acting assistant principal at Mount Arrie Elementary. The one, two, three acting positions I referenced this evening are temporary in, in nature, but they are to fill some, some gaps that we have in terms of some leaves. And we're excited to be able to bring on a full-time coordinator to the role, to work with Mr. Pierce, as well as a school psychologist from a neighboring school system.
Board members, any questions? And I call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approved. Now, we'll move on to, I need a motion to approve personnel action items.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockhart.
Okay, board members, this is our monthly personnel action item agenda. We have... We have nine new hires, one release, one promotion and one leave of absence. And that's all outlined in the agenda packet.
Board members, any questions? And I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. I need a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Vigney?
Uh, Dr. Lockard.
Yes, so we have one award of bid this evening. If you'll remember, earlier this school year, we decided to purchase a few additional air purifier units for each school, for, for many schools. The additional units are intended to allow schools to have flexibility to place them in non-traditional classroom areas where student instruction may be occurring, such as rooms and spaces where small groups work or pullout programs exist, et cetera. So that's outlined in the award of bids this evening.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Vigney?
Um, Dr. Lockard, I, I know that we had at one point said that we had these air purifiers in 100% of our classroom spaces. So the, the 112, where, these, these additional ones, where are they going? Are they in?
As I outlined in the, in the lead in there, so all of our regular classroom spaces, we hit first. These are for more of the, maybe a teacher pulls a small group out to work in a small setting classroom somewhere. Where we might have a group of five or eight students instead of a full classroom.
That's correct. It's, it's, this is essentially an additional two for every school. So with the original purchase, we tried to fit every traditional classroom, for lack of a better term. Spaces that had fewer than 15 kids, I think, or spaces where we thought, um, schools could space people out beyond six feet weren't all necessarily allocated. And so what we did in the original purchase was, uh, gave schools two additional large units, like the one right there, and two additional smaller units for maybe an office setting with, where one-on-one meetings might occur. Uh, as we got up and running this year, schools asked for additional units that size for, for, to, to be able to swing in and out of spaces like Dr. Lockard described, where maybe a small group is meeting or a pullout program's occurring, et cetera. So it's two more per school for them to use as they see best.
And these would be funded through the, the COVID federal funding?
If it's there. And I think Chris already has this on the fiscal report because that's how Chris is.
Right.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Now I need a motion for the approval of the fiscal year 22 CIP budget transfer.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard.
All right. So board members, we reconciled two systemic projects with the state public school construction program. It was determined that credit change orders resulted in the need to reimburse the state a small amount of money that was over the maximum participation level. So this transfer with the county allows, allows for that transaction to occur. Did I get that right?
This is oddly enough good news.
Our turn.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. I now entertain a motion for the approval of fiscal year 2022 CIP budget adjustment.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Dr. Lockard.
Thanks. So we're, board members, we're bringing a CIP budget adjustment for your approval. The funding allocation from the Maryland Public Schools Construction Program, FY 2021 School Safety Grant Program, didn't get finalized until later in spring of 2021, which was too late to be included in the FY 22 CIP budget when we approved it. So the FY 22 School Safety Grant Program allocation has, has also been released. Recognition of these funds will enable us to use the funds immediately for school safety and security improvement projects, which are reviewed and approved by your, um, Security Advisory Council.
Do you have an example of some of the things it could be used for?
Sure. Um, infrastructure for the camera systems, door locks, all of those hardware or hard type items that are part of the overall security program. So, and, and just legally, you have to eventually acknowledge these funds in your CIP, but they're coming out of sequence. But in this case, we can catch the one from before and the one now and, and have them in the, in the local project or the, uh, security project account now for, for use. They get vetted through the security council. We just had a meeting where Mr. Prokop and Mr. Pierce presented what, um, what's on the horizon. Another example that I think was presented are, uh, door locks. So that's a big item coming up. BDA's are part of this, the, um.
Bid directional amplifiers.
Yes, Dr. Lockard. The, the things that make the 800 megahertz radios work everywhere. All of those types of, of items.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Entertain a motion for the approval of revisions to board policy, JPA substance abuse for students.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard.
Okay. So board members, we had brought this previously for discussion. How we're bringing for action these changes aligned board policy, JPA substance abuse students, with the education article annotated code of Maryland, guidelines for public schools allowing the administration of medical cannabis to students. So this is back for your approval. And it's aligning with changes that have been made.
And, and this is essentially as it looked last meeting when we discussed?
Correct.
Any questions, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item 8G, I need a motion for the approval of a temporary construction easement with county government for stormwater management facility improvements at Century High School.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard.
Great. Board members, this is a typical temporary construction easement with the county. It allows for improvements to the stormwater facility at Century High School.
Board members, any questions?
There will there be any disruption at all to any of the fields?
Let Mr. Prokop weigh in there.
Short answer, no. Uh, the way that, if you see, uh, look, take a look at exhibit A, the way they're, uh, the entrance is going to be off of, I think it's old Liberty Road. So, so it shouldn't disrupt not only not the fields, but the school have any real impact to the school. It's on the far corner of the property.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Entertain a motion for the approval of political neutral stance, uh, board policy GBI, political activities of Carroll County Public School employees.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, we're bringing back, um, a revised, uh, policy and revision in the title, as well as some of the content, the politically neutral, uh, stance. Ms. McCabe is here. We have incorporated feedback from the last iteration. We look forward to your additional feedback and, um, and questions in conversation.
Yeah. So the three things that we revised since last time is, um, the title. Instead of having the title be political activities of Carroll County Public Schools employees, we changed that to political neutrality of Carroll County Public Schools employees. We changed it for both the policy and the regs. And then in the regs, uh, under paragraph one, uh, we made it clear that all instructional staff would be trained in the content of this policy and regulation each fall. Also, since, uh, since this revision is happening now, um, we also plan to do a training, soon after this is, um, soon after this goes into effect, so that, um, between now and the end of the, this year, our instructional staff will be made aware of the revisions as well. And in the future, we look to add this to the safe schools modules that instructional staff complete each fall. And then the last thing that we, um, added to the regs is that if parents have concerns about any kind of political bias in their child's school, that they should, uh, inform the school principal. So that's where we are at this point. Um, those were the, um, the extra revisions after the last meeting.
Ms. Metry?
Um, so my concern lies with, um, it says neither students nor employees are pressured, coerced or obligated to endorse political viewpoints or contribute to or to render service for any political candidate or party. And I know it was sort of mentioned in public comment, but I've also heard from certain students that they, uh, called in certain candidates to talk to students in class as part of, uh, different organizations or different student advocacy groups. So I'm just concerned that with the language currently stated there, which is saying, or contribute to or render service, that may sort of put a barrier on students being able to do that.
Yes. And we did have a situation that just, um, that came up in the last several weeks that highlighted the fact that our student clubs, um, are able to have speakers come in that the students select. And that those speakers may not necessarily, um, be unbiased, but that they are chosen by the students based on the content and the focus of the club itself. So, so yes, that, um, falls into how this is currently written and how it's currently understood.
Right. Which is separate from this, this, uh, policy and accompanying regulations are really written for employees.
Right.
As it relates to, um, you know, we're, we're looking at, um, making, ensuring that individual teachers and employees are not deviating from the established curriculum, inserting, inserting their own political viewpoints, et cetera. What Mr. McCabe described is student clubs or organizations outside of the instructional day and/or the framework of what we provide as a curriculum to students. That would be a separate, um, matter.
Right.
Through the equal access, uh, I believe. Right.
So, but school officials are helping out with that, right? So, I mean, if you're, I, I think the, the incident that was discussed or brought up tonight, they said that one gubernatorial candidate was brought in, right? I mean, if the, if the school officials are helping with that, shouldn't it be that all candidates are brought in?
Or invited.
Or invited, yeah.
For a student club, they can invite who they want. It's not an open forum like, uh, where everybody's viewpoint has to be seen. For a student club, they can invite in whoever they want.
Okay. But it's outside of, it, it's definitely still outside of instructional time or outside of, outside of normal school hours.
Right.
Or during designated club time in the school. So it's deemed a non-instructional activity time.
Right. But this, but, but these rules are, are geared towards, um, our, uh, individual teachers and employees not being able to deviate from the approved curriculum and inserting their own political viewpoints. This has nothing to do with student clubs.
Okay. No, I was just trying to understand, um, you know, like if it, if it's a student club and they bring in, so as long as it's just during designated club time, it's not that, you know, it's brought in for an assembly for all of the students or?
That, you're correct. That would be different. Right.
Okay. Ms. Vigney, anything else?
Yeah. Ms. McCabe, I actually have a, a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to discuss, potentially adding
Okay.
to this. Um, and it's consistent with discussions that we had at, at the past couple of, couple of meetings. But, um, I think, um, during, in this statement where it's, uh, so it's under purpose, it's kind of in the middle. So it says, and candidates, um, during classroom instruction. So it's hard to, hard to get at it without reading like the, the entire section. But we, we keep focusing on during classroom instruction, right? And, and I think that there's, there's a little bit of a loophole there where it's, it's not just instruction time, but it's during normal school hours, um, right? Like, so, um, educators could, you know, move planning time around or something and, and have, you know, they could have discussions during planning time. They could, you know, add an, a, add an assembly, which isn't necessarily, um, classroom instruction time. It, it seems like it should be during normal school hours, not just classroom instruction time. I, I don't know if other folks agree with that or not.
I, this is Rochelle. I believe you have a problem, uh, broadening it. You want to just direct your attention to what's going on during classroom instruction. If one teacher is talking to another teacher privately about something political, you can't prohibit that.
But doesn't it say that we, that they're not supposed to, but it says stuff like you don't engage in political discussions during work hours.
During instruction time. No. If somebody's at lunch, they can, the, two teachers can talk to one another about a political situation. We can't prohibit that.
I think, I think you might be talking about times when students are a captive audience, whether that be in classroom instruction time or in an assembly.
Or like talking with a teacher in the hallway or?
Or in the library.
Or in the, right.
Are you referring to like the last sentence of the section that you just pointed out? By prohibiting employees from engaging in political activity, but are you meaning that to include discussions or just talking with another person? It says, it ends by saying while on the job during working hours. I think you were trying to make a distinction, weren't you, between
Okay.
instructional time and really the entire workday.
So it is kind of captured in the second part of, of that sentence?
Yes, it does say while on the job during working hours, even though up, what you were pointing to in the middle of the paragraph talks more about during classroom instruction.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. So it, so it really is, okay. Thank you for that. So, and then down under, um, the policy statement, item F, so it says, prevent non-disruptive student expression of student viewpoints on political issues, parties and candidates. I feel like that's really vague and, and that that's maybe something that might require a definition. Like what do me, what do we mean by non-disruptive student expression? And is, are we really, because if, um, if, so, if folks go off topic, right? That's not directly related to the current curriculum, even if it is civil, um, or non-dis, uh, because that, that could be considered disruptive, right? If they go completely off topic, even though it might be civil.
I think we were taught, thinking more of, um, you know, student protests against certain political kinds of things within the school. Or we've had students come to school, um, wearing, uh, flags of their candidates, which can be disruptive in the school. So, um, I don't think we were necessarily thinking more about things that would happen in a discussion as much as we were thinking about, um, other actions that students might take during the school day.
Okay. Okay. Cause I, I was trying to think like, how, how would you actually define that to be a little less vague? I mean, would it be something like civil discourse or actions directly related to the approved curriculum at hand?
Something like seed dress code policy?
You're, you're talking F at the bottom.
Yeah. Cause it basically says, no such employee shall prevent non-disruptive student expression of student viewpoints on political issues, parties and candidates. But I think that, okay, so we're not going to prevent non-disruptive student expression. But what's, what really, what is non-disruptive student expression? Is it, is it civil discourse or actions directly related to the approved curriculum?
Right.
At hand, right? So they're not going to be?
But do you want students tied to the approved curriculum? This is just students, correct?
Well, I think what you're referring to is, again, you're trying to get rid of that double negative almost.
Yeah.
It says no, and then it says non-disruptive, and I think that gets a little confusing maybe.
And, and in this section, we're really just talking about employees.
Right. But it's saying employees shall not prevent students from having, so, I mean, I think what, what we were trying to say mean, I think what, what we're trying to say is that if you're in a government class, right, like it's okay for students to have civil discourse about, and debate about the topic at hand, right? But it's, it's not okay to go off topic and start talking about, say, mask mandates in, in English class, or?
Yeah, and, and that goes back to?
That's disruptive, if the students are doing that, that's disruptive.
Right, and that goes back to making sure that teachers are ensuring that they, as well as the students, are, are entering into discourse that's curriculum-related.
Right. Right, and so that's what I was trying to get at, like, so non-disruptive, I mean, it needs to be curriculum-related.
Right.
Because I think we're trying to say what an employee shall do.
Yeah, it does. It says, "however, no such employee shall," down to F, "prevent non-disruptive."
But my question, my question would be, does this apply? I'm 11th grader at Man Valley, and I wear a political T-shirt. That's not disruptive, that's okay.
Yes.
If I'm waving a flag and making noise or sticking posters on the wall without permission, that's disruptive.
Correct.
And, and that's what I looked at this more than discussions in class, but I'm not sure now that you say it.
Yeah, that's what I was basically trying to say, like, okay, well, so actions can be disruptive, and discussions can be disruptive if they're not on topic.
Yeah.
Right, so I don't want to say that a teacher can't, can't prevent some folks from being completely off topic, right?
But does D, does D cover that, do you think, or, or not, not really?
I think your teachers typically do a pretty good job of preventing disruptive conversation or disruptive things from happening, you know, frequently. Through this lens, I think it's really trying to highlight, you know, our, no employee shall prevent a, a civil discourse of thoughts and ideas, expressions, student viewpoints on political issues, parties, and candidates. In other words, appropriate to the curriculum, it's a government class, it's a current event, it's whatever, that you're going to have this diff, this exchange of different viewpoints.
Right.
And as, as long as it doesn't become, you know, as some of the examples you provided, you know, disruptive to the instructional program.
Right.
We encourage that with our students.
And we can add some verbiage in there that says something like Dr. Locker just said about making sure that, you know, as long as it's related to the curriculum at hand and it's civil discourse about political issues, it's fine.
Right, I, I think that, I just wanted to make sure that, like, so disruptive could be being off-topic.
Yes, it could be.
Right, like if you try to have conversations that are completely off-curriculum, right, like, it could be non-disruptive from a, like, they're civil about it, they're, but, but if it's off-topic, that, that's disruptive to instructional time, right? So, I, I was just trying to clarify that, that piece of it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get it, and you, you don't want, you don't want a student's conversation in a government class limited.
Right.
Oh, because that's government class, and then we need to have discussions where we're going to have feelings about that.
I see where you're headed. Anything else?
Yeah, and under guidelines, so it says, "the superintendent shall issue regulations and periodic guidelines to implement this policy." I'd, I'd like to add a few items to that, to say, not specifically what the administrative regulations will be, but items that we want to make sure are covered in administrative regulations. I want that, I would like that to be part of the policy, so that we know that they, they will always be part of the administrative regulations, right, since we don't have the ability to prove administrative regulations, right? So the, the first one, so I was, I would like to add verbiage, something to the effect of, "these regulations shall include, one, a reporting and monitoring mechanism for parents to inform principals and file an incident report."
Where are you on, can you tell us where you are?
Oh, I'm just under guidelines.
That's the last.
Five, Roman numeral five on the policy.
If this makes, if this makes sense, I think, that sentence, "the superintendent shall," and I think, I think what you're intending to do is add in, "included but not limited to the following," and?
Exactly. These regulations shall, you know, included but not limited to.
So it's a total addition, she, what she's talking.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
So that was the first one. The second is?
Can, can you repeat that again?
A reporting and monitoring mechanism for parents to inform principals and file an incident report.
What, do you really want to get into that?
Yes.
I, I'm really concerned about there being an aura of student speech being so closely monitored.
No, that's.
I, I want to be sure that's not going to happen.
That's not student speech, that's.
I know, I know, but the conversation that was just held was talking, I heard you all talking about disruptive student expression or student viewpoint.
No, that's against, it's not.
I think what Ms. Savigny is referencing is, you know, what we, what we spoke to last time, if a parent has a concern, we said we would, we would encourage them to first reach out to the teacher and then reach out to the school administrator if they had a concern with either topics or political non-neutrality happening in a classroom or a setting somewhere. I, I am, I am concerned about, you know, beyond, so typically, we ask our parents to report to teachers or principals just about everything that they have a concern or a problem with. I guess I'd need to hear more, Ms. Savigny, about what you're thinking as it relates to incident reports or monit, monitoring mechanisms.
Well, I think, you know, because we had talked about how there's a bullying form online that you can fill out, and I was thinking it would be something very similar to that, where you would fill out, say, "we, we think there was a, we think there was a violation of the political neutrality policy," and it would, it would go to the teacher and the principal, right? But I think we need to understand where it's happening, how often it's happening, and track it, and basically say, "do we, do we have an issue or not?"
That may be opening a can of worms that you really don't want to have. There's a, a, not just a fine line, there's a line between people having the right to a, an opinion, and I wouldn't want this school system to be getting involved in, let's say, somebody overhearing a conversation between two teachers and getting reported. The, the inference in that would be very bad for us.
No, I'm not saying that we get involved in that at all, it, it's simply that there's a way to track how often we think it's happening, because the next, the next thing I was going to say was that progressive discipline guidelines for repeat violations.
I don't, I don't think you understand what she's?
I, I am understanding, and I think it's, I don't, I don't think this is a road you want to go down.
So we're, we're supposed to?
I'm very concerned about First Amendment issues.
So we're supposed to allow a teacher to give their opinion on students in a math class, that they need to be vaccinated and they need to be masked?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
But that's what this is about. This is to make sure that we are keeping curriculum and curriculum, it lines up. Math is math, history is history, English is English.
Right, and you have that. I'm, I'm now concerned about the guidelines that you're proposing. I, I, I think that the, the, you should keep the guideline as it is, with allowing the superintendent to issue regulations and periodic guidelines to implement the policy. When you get into having reports being filed, where it's in your guidelines, that is going to open up, I'm telling you, a can of worms you don't want to open up in terms of people, and I don't want to sound histrionic, but it could almost get into a whole Big Brother type thing. I, I'm just really concerned about this, about where it would go. That's just my opinion, I, I leave it to you to make your decision.
And, and I understand what you're saying, that the concern I have is that we, we have been told of many repeat offenses by certain teachers that don't seem to be getting handled, and, or, or nothing really happens to those teachers, and the behavior doesn't change. And so it, they're, they're, I, I believe there's an issue, I believe it's an issue of a very small number of teachers. But I believe there's an issue that needs to be handled, like, so the principals need to make sure that they're handling it a prop, properly, that they identify if something is happening. They can at least make an incident report, I'm not saying that it's automatically deemed a violation as soon as somebody makes a report, of course, it would be investigated, like, so it would be handled by the teacher and the principal, but we need an idea of how often it's happening, and if there are repeat offenders.
Can we consider, again, staying at the policy level, and, I mean, I don't think we need to say anything in guidelines, really, other than the superintendent shall issue the regulations and the guidelines to implement it. I think beyond that, we're, we're sort of getting below where we need to be. We take care of the what, and, you know, the guidelines through the superintendent and his staff will take care of the regulations. So I'd like to suggest that we just keep it right at this policy level, and just leave the regulations to the staff under Dr. Locker.
Right, but I, I believe it's important for, I mean, I don't want to see the actual incident report, I simply want to know how many times things have been reported, how many times it was deemed an issue, are there repeat offenders? And I think that the only way to know that is if you, if you create a form that needs to be filled out and tracked. I understand that we would typically want to keep those in the administrative regulations, but we don't have authority over administrative regulations, and I feel that this is very important, and so therefore I would like to include it as, I'm not saying how specifically it needs to be carried out, I'm just saying that that element needs to be part of the administrative regulations.
And I am going to agree with Ms. Savigny, I, you know, we do need a way where parents feel, because we're always saying, we want parent involvement, and now, you know, if a parent feels there's a concern in something, they should feel that there is a way that they can make their voices heard. Look, I have a concern regarding something that, you know, it was in the text that my, my child had, or there was a conversation in the classroom that this, the teacher had, that I feel does not go along with what they should be learning. There needs to be a way, because there have been instances where some, a, a staff member continually has done it, and they've gotten away, they, well, I hate to say gotten away with it, but a parent has made complaint, and nothing to this day has still been done. So I, I do think that we do need to have something where a parent, if they took a picture or something, you know, kids like, "hey, Mom, this, this was my, my paper," you know, "and, you know, I don't, I don't feel comfortable filling out what my pronoun is, and that has nothing to do with math." So you, you have situations where parents, you know, they think something's not comfortable to be in a certain curriculum setting, and something needs to, they need to feel safe where they could submit something.
Dr. Locker?
Yeah, I was just going to say, typically, and I know, I, I've seen a, a couple of these in my time, where something will come beyond the principal to the director, or even to Ms. McCabe, when it's an issue of, "hey, I met with my teacher, I met with my principal, I still don't agree with the assignment, the activity, because I feel like there was, you know, some, some political bias, you know," and we've handled those. I can't speak to maybe some that never came to us, but wouldn't you agree that you've also had the, the directors be involved in, in working with the parents, and if there's action or correction that needs to happen, we do that.
We do, we, we take it seriously, and we have taken action with it, with different incidents that I can remember in the last, you know, year or two years, you know, since I've been in this position, but, you know, and certainly if there are other things, a, as you stated, that are still happening or still out there, we definitely need to hear about that, so that we can go back and make sure that it is addressed properly.
And, and, and I'm listening to everybody, and, and I'll try to, I'll use a vague example, but I get a call from a parent, and this, this, this happened in my class, and I say, "did you talk to your teacher?" "Yes." "I'm not happy." "Did you talk to the principal?" "Three times, I'm not happy." And then what I do is I tell you, and maybe that is the next step, but how does a parent know what to do when they're, they, they probably shouldn't be calling a board member, but I, I, I pass it on, and I told you, I'll keep doing it till you hang up on me, and you haven't. You, you, you actually encourage me to let you know when I hear something, and I recognize it may be total bull, or it may be legit, and, and I don't even ask what happened next, I just do that much, but, so I, I can see where, and we, if we do it for bullying, and that can open up Pandora's box too.
Right.
You know, it just, it'd be nice if, I don't know, in the school calendar, someplace it told a parent, you know, "we encourage you to talk to the teacher and then the principal, if you want to go further, you do this."
Outline of the process in this, in the calendar handbook.
And maybe that covers it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there is.
Yes. But unfortunately, many parents don't know that.
No, no, like, like I say, they?
All the steps are listed right there, and again, we start at the low level.
Teacher.
Right.
Principal, director, school system chief, superintendent of school, and your Board of Education. It, it does say that right there.
And I know I've been out of the system as an employee for a while, but during my time, parents didn't have a problem with who to contact. I mean, if they were upset with you, or didn't like what was being done at the school, right off to central office, you know? They called, right to the superintendent's office, and again, the superintendent would usually refer it to the director, but again, you know, it, it took place at the central level, but it was always brought back to the school. And again, you know, we want to work with our parents as school administrators, so if I have a parent who has a concern, if it's a repeated concern, you know, we're going to be working together to try to get that resolved, and, you know, there are steps in place for, for working with our teachers as well. I mean, we don't have to, I don't think, come up with any kind of special form to document a concern about what a teacher may have said or done. I mean, I think we're dealing with the, the school administrator, and then again, involving central office staff as needed, and, you know, we need to let that be it. After a while, I think teachers are, you know, if, if we make it seem like we're trying to censor or to tie hands as far as things that can be said, you know, they'll be afraid to, to teach their curriculum after a while, because, you know, no one wants to be misunderstood of saying anything. I mean, just like, you know, some people during, well, I can't say some people, but a person, you know, said something concerning me during our citizen participation time. Well, you know, it was taken out of context in a way, but in another way, yes, we are agents of the state, so, you know, and I wouldn't really want that documented as something, you know, against what I have said or, or professed publicly. So again, you know, I just have a real concern when we go beyond saying, you know, that we want to come up with administrative regulations, or we want to make sure that there's a specific form, and there's this and that, we want to document these things. I, I just think we're setting ourselves up, and I think we're going where we don't need to go, we need to keep it right at the board level. We're concerned with the what, and we'll let Dr. Locker deal with the how.
I think there's a big difference, though, between, okay, you know, someone brings up something in math, and, you know, okay, so let's say this many people voted, but this is how many this person got, do we think there was election fraud? There's a difference in that than when a teacher stands in front of a class, looks at any kid, and says, "if your parents voted for Trump, you need to go get your head examined." There's a big difference, and that has happened.
That would be an issue that would need to be addressed.
Right.
Absolutely, and like I said, we have, I know that there have been some that have come in that we have addressed. I, I hear what you're saying, that you hear from some folks that sometimes they feel like it's not, we need to know about them, because I can assure you, and these directors will tell you, they're, they know when emails come in, I, we deal with it as quickly as we can. I'm sure sometimes they hate to see emails coming from me, but, but, you know, we want to know, we want to follow if, if parents are not satisfied, working through. If, if parents are not satisfied, working through the process that Ms. Dorsey just outlined in the calendar handbook, you know, that's why we have different folks to help, help our principals if there's an issue there that's not being addressed and, and so forth. And that's, that's true with anything. A discipline issue they don't agree with, you know, bullying harassment, whatever it might be that doesn't seem to be able to get resolved at the school. You know, the, these folks work with the principals pretty extensively to try to resolve, solve and/or correct, remediate, fix those issues. We don't want that happening to our students, just like we don't want bullying and harassment to happen to our students or, you know, unfair discipline, you know, issues, et cetera.
And I, I understand all the comments that, that have been made this evening. But I feel that there is a perception in the community that there are issues going on in the classroom. And when they bring them up, that they're not being handled or the teacher is not, the situation is either not handled or discipline is not happening. Now, I understand that the parents don't have a right to know, like, what, if something gets investigated, what the results of the investigation are. But, Dr. Lockard, you just said, when these things happen, you need to know. Right? This is how you would know. Right? And there's a perception in the community that these things are happening and they're not being appropriately handled. I'm trying to say, I'm trying to put something in place to say, we recognize them and they're being appropriately handled. Right? Rather than just say, take our word for it.
Mrs. Herbert?
Let me tell you, in all my forty-some years of teaching, there are loose cannons out there. You know, teachers that do not follow the rules and regulations. And they need to be addressed. Now, I do have a question, Ms. Sevigney. Would this be in place, what, what you want to do, this, this form to fill out, would this be in place instead of calling your principal or talking to the teacher? Or is this additional?
No, I mean, the, the administrative regulations can lay out however they see fit. Right? Like, so if you fill this out and it goes to the teacher or the principal? Or if it's just a, if you, if you did report something to a teacher or a principal that we would like to keep track of it? I'm, I'm not sure exactly the, the best way to do it.
Look, I do understand, you know, sometimes things do not get taken care of. And you want everything taken care of in that perception. I do, I do understand that. Yes, I do, I do understand that part.
Right, I mean, is it possible that if, if a parent fills this out, that it goes to the teacher?
Sure.
That it would go to the teacher and the principal? Like, that, that would be the, what they, I'm not saying exactly what the form has to contain. I'm just saying that there needs to be a way for parents to feel that they can report it. It can't be anonymous. Right? We've talked about that, right? Like, we don't want it, because then you can't investigate anything or-
So what if, what if it's, you know, I have this concern about X and it's submitted and the teacher and/or the teacher and the principal sit down with the parent or have a conversation and the parent says, oh, okay, I understand. Do we still count the form as an incident? Do we, are we recording or, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's going to be a lot of situations, that's why when we encourage people to call us, we typically can work through to resolution or, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, sometimes, you know, I'm, I'm listening to my own kids and listening to their interpretation of something that, that's happened or something they've experienced or something they've participated in. And sometimes it leaves me with questions like, ah, you know, I wonder how they're describing that. You know, is, I'm not questioning their accuracy, but I'm just saying, I know there's always a, a couple different angles to things. And so if we're doing forms and reporting, and once we sit down and, and we get some resolution to something, I guess my next thing is then, okay, are we tracking instances where it was just a matter of communication? Or, oh, that wasn't really, you know, it wasn't exactly how it was described? Or, I, I don't know, I, we-
You're struggling with this.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it's the same a little bit with even the bullying. Again, I got called by a set of parents who were totally frustrated with some of the administration on bullying. And they just didn't know what else to do. They said, tell me who to talk to. And I told the principal and I told you. And unfortunately, within two days, that kid got beat up by them. So I wish I'd have done it a week earlier. But, you know, it's, it's frustrating, but I don't know. And, and again, my, my opinion would be, and I don't know what you do with the bullying forms, but to me, it's, it's just, the parents need to know what their next recourse is. And I don't know, again, that family surely didn't see it in there, you know? And I, I just, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't know that it needs to be tracked. I think you've got some other concerns too, that, that maybe it would be. I'm not saying what you're intending, because you didn't get through the, the, the things you were talking. But it, it's frustrating and, and-
Do we need to do a better job of articulating the parents?
Here's how you follow what's in the, the, the calendar handbook. Mr. Kyler, you said a lot of people don't even know that that's there.
Yeah, maybe those words ought to be on the website. I, I don't, I don't know, you know? It's, it's, we, like I say, when something happens, you wish you would have done more. And when it doesn't, we all relax, you know? And, and I, I don't, I don't know.
Right. Well, I, I just feel like we really need to get our arms around it, because there's a perception out there. And if we can say, even, even if it's just, you know, if they, if they have the ability to say, to report it, like, here, here, I think there was an incident. At least, at least they could mark is that was a, was a conversation had with that parent, right? Did the, did the teacher and the principal at least have a conversation with that parent? Maybe that's how you resolve it. You know, then you don't necessarily have to report that as an incident. But there, there, there's a concern and we need to demonstrate to the community that we're doing something about it.
I get it. I, I know, that, I know, but what, what you want to, what you want to do? I really, you want to track it and you want to know who's doing these incidents.
Right, and I want to do the same thing for bullying.
Right.
I really do. Because now we're, we're hearing bullying reports, like, you're talking about microaggressions and bullying on a regular basis. We're hearing people come in and talk about bullies. Like, stuff is happening and it's not getting addressed, at least to the way that the community thinks is appropriate. So it's incumbent upon us to do something about that. And I don't think we can do something about it unless we actually understand how often and where it's happening.
And, and we're in a time where, not, not by our control, we've had where parents could watch classes and they saw things that they never knew happened before. Everybody's frustrated, they either hate masks or they love masks and they want a vaccine or, or I'm going to make you sick because I didn't get one. And people are frustrated. And, and I don't know, we don't want to overreact, but I think we need to show them that, that we, we care about it. And, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Do you feel, Ms. Sevigney, that them contacting the, the teacher and the principal plus filling out this form, they have to do both? Is that, is that, was that what you want? I mean-
I think the form's an option.
The form?
I guess the form can be an option.
Okay, I, I just, yes. I, I look, I know what, I know what you want. You want to track, and if the same teacher's doing it over and over and over and over again, they need to be talked to. I, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. And we need to clean this up. But we also need to remind everybody that talk to the teacher, talk to the principal and follow these five people too, not just go fill out a form and, and close it up. You want to track who's doing what, because if it's the same people that are bullying or the same people that are doing this and running around with flags, instigating something in your class, I get it, because I have taught with those people before and it needed to stop. So, I just, I think we need to talk about it a little bit more and, and figure out, you gotta, you gotta fill, do both things? I don't know, I just, I, I, Davanchi? Yeah, I know what you want, but we got to get it. Because we, we've got to stop what's going on. And I, I know that, and the perception.
I mean-
Just got to figure it out how to do it.
As you suggest, if not the form, then would possibly the amount of times they reach out to the principal, like, and the principal meeting with them, could that be tracked instead? Instead of the form itself, but how many times they reach out to the principal?
So would that be a, a parent would do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Repeat, repeat that again.
So, instead of the form itself, to have a data point, just the principal or the administration would report how many times a parent reached out to them regarding certain incidents, rather than the form.
I, I don't know. Yeah, we, we got to collaboratively think about this and, you know, and do it right. But I understand, we've got to keep track of, of the, and stop those same teachers doing it over and over and over again. Just the way with bullying, that's got to stop. Yep, we have to do something. And, uh-
The, the three things that I wanted to include, to, to make sure were included in the administrative regulations were this type of thing. So, reporting mechanism for parents. To, it, it was meant to inform principals and teachers of a perceived incident. So whether it's them calling the teacher or filling out the form and the form goes to the teacher, but then the teacher would have to reach out to the parent or something like that. I mean, there's, there's a process that could be followed.
Right, I mean, well, we could, okay, so following our same sort of guidelines as we do, perhaps there could be something where if the parent has taken the initiative to reach out to the teacher and not gotten satisfaction there, has reached out to the administrator, not gotten satisfaction there, perhaps there's a way that they could, I mean, I could, I could live with saying, okay, then if, I mean, they typically will call us.
Right.
But if, if you're in terms of a data point, want us to capture parents, and this is different than they just call us, they, if they've worked with the teacher and worked with the principal and still aren't satisfied, then the data point could be, okay, now we have an issue here, like we typically do, and we're looking at it. And we could monitor, keep track of, not necessarily, you know, Jane Smith, but we've had, you know, three instances of this. And we are going to address it, that's what we do, and handle it. I'm not exactly sure what that would look like or how that would go, but that still follows our, our process. That follows our teacher, principal, director, chief.
If, if you did something, it could even start out by saying, when did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? You know, that could be the first items on the form to reinforce that. It, it's, I, I don't know. And then, I'm naive, just because that, if that form's on the website, I don't know how many people see that. But, but it's another opportunity. And that's where you would want it on the website, right?
We could basically say, have you called the teacher? Have you called the principal? When they say that they're, yes, but we haven't gotten what we think is a reasonable resolution, then maybe fill out the-
We could, we could work with staff on some kind of process like that that, that we could put in place at the central office level and, and keep track of it.
Go ahead, Pat.
No, I was going to say, that's why I say it certainly would be Dr. Lockard and his staff to come up with whatever you deem appropriate here, as far as the guidelines are concerned.
Right, and that's why I, I'm not saying exactly what the administrative regulations should be. I'm simply saying that there should be a reporting mechanism for incidences. And maybe the wording is that, you know, if, if a parent is unsatisfied with, there's, there's a reporting mechanism, right? So, and-
I'm, I'm curious of the whole picture, where you're headed. You, you said some, some form of reporting.
Right, some form of-
Some, some progressive discipline, and what was number three?
Progressive discipline guidelines for repeat violations. When something is actually deemed a violation, that there's progressive discipline for it. And the third one was mandatory professional development on an ongoing basis.
And we have that.
That's easy.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
And we start with that. We don't progressively get to the point, now you're going to have to have PD. We, don't we start with giving professional development as far as the curriculum is concerned and the kinds of things that can and should be said?
Yes, and, and that is baked in now to the regulations where everyone will be trained in the contents of, of the policy and regulation every fall.
Right. And so, and, and again, we don't have control over the administrative regulations. And so, but I think from a policy perspective, we want to make sure that the administrative regulations have these elements in it. Right? So that it'll include those elements, but not limited to those elements, right? Because, Dr. Lockard, when, when there's a new superintendent in place, it, it could happen. They say, we're, we're completely changing these administrative regulations and we don't have a, we don't have a say.
So would the, would the board be satisfied if, if for five, for guidelines, we wrote that the superintendent shall issue regulations that include a reporting mechanism for parents, progressive discipline and mandatory professional development? Would that satisfy the board?
I think that, that, that's a good start, I really do. I, I understand what Donna wants and you don't want that same teacher doing it over and over again.
Sure.
But I don't want somebody to fill out a paper and say, he said, she said, and, and it, that's not, that's-
Board members, progressive discipline's already in your negotiated agreements. Yeah. And also, when I, just thinking back, when you were talking about disruption, I think you need to adopt the Tinker standard, the Supreme Court's Tinker standard, that disruption means substantial disruption. Just so you have an understanding of, of what you're looking at.
Okay, so, what, what was the, the first one?
Well, the, the first one is discipline. Discipline, progressive discipline is something that's already negotiated.
What does that mean? So, so if-
Mr. O'Neill, come, Mr. O'Neill can give me the language out of the contract.
So if they deem an employee to have violated this policy?
I would, I would suggest that I'll look to Ms. Eisenberg for her, her legal plans. I would suggest that the most you could put in a regulation would be that uncovered violations would follow the progressive discipline as, as contained in the appropriate collective bargaining agreement. It's a negotiable topic by law and it has been negotiated. So, short of negotiations, I don't think you could define a, a separate type of, or a, you know, you couldn't in a regulation without collective bargaining say, progressive discipline in this instance will be XYZ. There's progressive discipline and it's in your master agreements.
Okay, so what was the wording that you just used? Uncovered violations?
Well, I'm just sort of making this up on the fly.
This is why we, we really need to bring this back and, and think about it. I'm also, as we're, as we're talking, and I can't remember if the master agreement speaks to academic tenure and freedom. Is there a section there in the beginning?
There's a section, yeah, there is a section.
And that's really something we have to think about when we're talking about the whole First Amendment issue here. If it's already in the agreement. We have to take a look at it, yeah.
So you're telling us basically a teacher can say whatever they want to a student, whenever?
Exactly, I would, I would never say that and I don't, I don't believe that.
But I don't think you're understanding what we're doing, though, is, you know, we're not trying to violate someone's First Amendment rights. We're trying to make sure that they're sticking with the curriculum and that is it.
Oh, I under, I understand and I agree with that. I, I totally agree with sticking with the curriculum. And I've actually litigated cases, two cases, not in Carroll County, but elsewhere, regarding the, the termination of a teacher who would not stick to the curriculum, wouldn't follow the curriculum. I get that totally. My concern, my concern is a First Amendment concern. And I just want to be sure that what we do here doesn't violate people's First Amendment rights. Teachers do not have the right to stray from the curriculum. And I totally agree that when you're in math class, you shouldn't be talking about whether we should have invaded Iraq. I mean, I, I get that totally. And I, that's really what you all were talking about when you first just started discussing having a policy on this.
Right.
And I want to be sure that you don't stray from that. Because, trust me, trust me. And I want to be sure that you don't stray from that, because, trust me, trust me, you will have the ACLU on your backs if we do things like try to restrict one teacher's right from talking to another teacher.
No, it's not that.
That's not.
I want to be sure we're not going to do that.
No, it's, it's flat out, it's, it's in the curriculum, and they need to keep their political opinions and current event opinions to themselves, instead of pushing it onto the classroom.
Absolutely, that, absolutely, you're correct about that.
Yeah, that's what all this is.
And I want to be sure that we don't go beyond that. You know, because when we're, when you, when you start reporting people for what they say, or what you thought they said, then things can blow up very quickly.
Well, that happened during virtual, anyway, I mean, all, all Google classrooms were already pre-recorded, or were already recorded, so kids could play back. That's where a lot of this stemmed from, is because parents were going, whoa, did I just hear what I thought I heard? And, or they saw something that had nothing to do with what the child was learning. So that's where a lot of this stemmed from.
Yeah, you know, I almost, I almost hate to make rules based on what we saw in virtual, because that was such an odd period of time, and I, I don't think people were totally acting the way they normally would in the classroom. It was just a very different time for us, and I want you to keep that in mind, too. But I, my goal for you, as, as your counsel, is to make sure that what, whatever policy we pass doesn't violate, or that it's not so amorphous that it could violate people's First Amendment rights, or the, and I really do believe this is in the master agreement, about academic freedom and tenure, and, and things like that. I really do need to take a better look at this, if you don't mind. I have concerns, and again, I agree that people should stick to the curriculum, not insert their personal political viewpoints. How can you, how can one disagree with that?
Dr. Lockard, what, what is the timing for this? Are we, are we under the gun, should, should we say, we want to table this? And, and, and I think you guys could word a paragraph saying, you know, we want a mechanism of reporting, we want discipline per the negotiated agreements, we want professional development per the five things that already say we do it, you know? And, you agree?
I do, I, I would like to get this in sooner rather than later.
Oh, I agree.
But if it's one more month, then so be it.
I think so. That would be a good idea.
Yeah, we can take it back and continue to work and revise together.
So do we need a?
So I guess I'll make a motion, then, to table this until further discussion next month. So we'll, we'll do some additional investigation and, and look at wording for next month. So I make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Oh, now, now I need a nap. Now I need.
I'm sorry, you're charged now.
I need a motion to approve before and after childcare provider at Hampstead Elementary School.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Dr. Lockard?
Yeah, so, board members, similar to the action we brought you last month for Manchester Elementary, Hampstead Elementary had to, need to change before and after daycare providers once the school year opened. Again, Mr. Prokop was able to work with the principal, so that the PTA could arrange for a new provider, who exists in other schools in our system, to meet the parents' needs for daycare. So we're bringing you the lease for your official approval.
Any questions? All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The, this is the one where it says Manchester in the, in the wording of it, so.
Yes.
It's so similar to the situation last month at Manchester, that I didn't completely update the working cover sheet. I'll work with Ms. LaCita to make sure that's permanently reflected.
In the recommendation, though, it does say Hampstead.
Dr. Lockard? I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Dorsey, did you, did you have something?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were reaching for your card.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're right, it's, it's right in the recommendation section, so, right.
Yes, yes, it's wrong and right on this paper, yep.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Approval of professional services contract superintendent search. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second. I'm sorry, my mic.
Dr. Lockard, do you want to say something, or stay out of it?
This is your, your item, so.
The only thing that I would like to say, this is for MAB, and again, we talked about the value of our partnership with MAB. I have talked to them, and, and I, I think I was asked by somebody, should we, should we look at three more? Should we do this, should we do that? And I think you're very professional, and made sure you gave us time, and we shouldn't goof that up. They said, they assured me that they would do no more than four. There's like eight or nine already. They've already told a couple others, I'm sorry, I think we have our four. So for their timeline, they would like to hear from us tomorrow, whether we did this or didn't do this, so they don't block out other, other jurisdictions. They did promise that, and, and Marsha and Donna, you were involved before, so you're familiar with it, but they did promise us the A-team, and if we wanted a meeting yet in December, two different people were off overlapping each other. They said early next week, they would, they would talk to us if we want to try to do a meeting yet before the end of the year. So.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, you know, since Marsha and I were involved in the search four years ago, we had talked at that time about using possibly other consulting firms for, for searches. And it was the cost, and, and MAB's experience, really, that they, that they brought to the table, kind of made it a no-brainer decision for us to use MAB. And now, after having been through that process with MAB, I would say they were extremely professional. They, they served us very well, so I would say that it, it, it's, again, a no-brainer for me in terms of, of making this decision.
So I'm not familiar with the superintendent search process, but I just want to know if it was standard practice to use MAB. Have we done that in the past, where we use MAB, the superintendent search process?
We did just four years ago.
We just used it four years ago.
I'm not sure how much we used them previously, who would know that? Would John?
John O'Neill's been here for a hundred years, have we, what, what happened in past searches?
Chris might know, he paid the bill.
You're saying, yes, Carrie, that we've used them, whenever we've done a search in the past, we've used them?
For the last two, I think, Chris is confirming.
Okay.
All I'm aware of a superintendent search was the CCSJA aspect of it, with the students weighing in, but.
And, and something else I should mention, and they, they were very pleased with the staff here, and how things went. They talked about, they probably haven't raised the price for our size of a school system. They did raise it on smaller ones, because they didn't have the staff to support the copying and some of the stuff that has to be done. And, and speaking of our financial person, I think they want half the money almost immediately, but you're probably familiar with that from before also, but full disclosure. Ms. Herbert?
Yes, and we have a great relationship with them, we need to use them again. And for people that don't know, we, we get the, the community involved, the parents involved, the employees involved, the students involved, and this is just not the five of us sitting up here making the, the total decision. We do a lot of input from outside, which is, which is very important, and, and the only way to go is MAB.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kyler, did we, did we state for the record what the cost was? I think we probably should do that, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, it's, it's on here, twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not seeing it.
You must.
Yeah, I don't have it, you have it, I don't have it either.
Oh, you don't have, oh, okay.
Twenty-six thousand.
Is there a new version of item?
Yes, I'm sorry, I got, I ended up with one that, here. I think that's the only difference, but maybe not. I'm sorry, I assumed we all had the same thing.
Okay, yeah, so the copy that I think the rest of us have does not say the fiscal impact.
I had an old one, and then I got that one, I'm sorry.
Twenty-six thousand.
Oh, if I'm ahead of you four ladies for like five minutes, I'll take it. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And speaking of the great staff, I think they're going to already have stuff for us to sign. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the Southern Area Redistricting Committee.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Turn that right over to Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening again. We have discussed at various times, including at, I think, the last couple of joint meetings with commissioners, when would be the right timing to come back to you and have a conversation about what to do with the Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee, which, as you know, has been on pause, and then longer pause, given the pandemic. And we had hinted that maybe December, November might be the proper timeline. We, we don't have, Mr. Kane hasn't completed official enrollment projections yet, and there's some challenges to that, that I'm sure the superintendent will update you on, in, in the near future. But we do know enough from our yet unverified official enrollment, our attendance, that the numbers are pretty close to overall what Mr. Kane chose as a methodology with your approval, that we, we pretty much bounced back about half from the pandemic enrollment. And in the southern section of the county, the numbers remain on a, on a projection as to where they were that led to the Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee being formed in the first place. So we believe, and Dr. Lockard believes, that it is time to, to look at that process again and begin it in earnest. At the time, we started what we called the FERC, the Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee. Based on that educational facilities master plan, we were limiting it to the elementary schools in the southeast region, and we noted that the middle school projections were such that those should be watched. They also are holding, enrollments are holding, and so we think it's time to just open up the entire feeder pattern. Because once you move from elementary to include middle, there's going to be questions of how that impacts the feeder patterns of, of all of the schools in the area. And so we're recommending to you this evening that the FERC become the SARC, the Southern Area Redistricting Committee.
What? It's a little less likely to sound like a swear word when you're saying.
There you go. And the superintendent's also recommending that the composition of the committee be very similar to, to the Freedom Elementary Redistrict Committee, including key staff from the school system, key staff from the county, and rep, school-based administrators, and representative parents from each of the schools that could be impacted in the process. So it would be a bit of a larger committee than, than the, than the prior one. Even for the staff members here and at the county, there have been changes, so in some ways, we would be reforming this thing, not, not maybe literally from scratch, but, but kind of starting over. We think we could get those notifications out in January, and start to, start to form the, the process and get underway, to remain on the timeline that, that's in your board, and your board policy and administrative regulation, JCAA, so that a report and recommendation would come to you next September to begin the public dialogue, and then an eventual decision, if, if there's one to be made by you later in the fall. And just, because we always get this question, we have this conversation, so then if there were changes to come out of this, when could they be implemented? At the earliest, the following school year. So this isn't something where massive disruptive changes are going to be occurring next, you know, next school year. It would be at, at the earliest of school year after that. So, so that's what we're recommending, that we do reinstitute it, that we do look at the entire, the entire region with all of its feeder patterns, and that we, we get started now, so that we can have lots of time to, to set up and work, and be on, on the timeline in policy and regulation, JCAA. Mr. Prokop and Mr. Hardisty were co-chairing that effort, and they'd be happy to continue that work as well in the future.
I, I like the idea of the name change and the, and the scope change. I don't know if I like the name, but, but, and the other thing, I think, and you, you said it, but some people aren't going to understand, this isn't picking up what was going on, this is starting new with a new timeline. You've probably had people on the other committee that don't have kids in the same school anymore. I mean, it just, it isn't, and with COVID, it just, you didn't lose a lot. And, but I think everybody, including the county, needs, and the public, needs to understand that it's a new timeline, and, and you're getting it started quickly.
And I'm guessing we'll get a question or two at the joint meeting. And so I agree with you, Mr. Kyler, but we also had a process in place, we had a framework, so it's not quite starting literally from scratch. There's, you know, there's some semblance of knowing where we want to go, and how we can more quickly get there, too.
We'll also, as we did before, we kind of kept a central site to, to all communications regarding the SARC, so that any community members can be kept fully aware of, of the process, the progress, et cetera.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of substitute teacher pay rate on add-in for fiscal year 22.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard?
Okay, so board members, we're looking at a number of ways. We've talked earlier in, at board meetings previously about some of the challenges we faced with the school year, with various employee groups. We're working with our teachers on possible remedies for some of those things, as well as looking at our substitute teachers. One of the issues is lack of substitutes, and making sure we can keep the substitutes we have, including our long-term substitutes, who really are the, the teacher of record. Our long-term substitutes are planning, they're delivering instruction every day, they're working with teammates, they're talking to parents, it's a significant role. And we want to keep those folks, and we also want to attract more, because what that ultimately does is limits the amount of holes that we have when we can't find enough folks to fill the substitute positions. That adds strain on our teaching staff, our administrators, our support staff sometimes get pulled into things like that. So there's a domino effect, so we're trying several different things here, this is one of them, to help address for the remainder of this year, the impact that lack of substitutes has had on us. And so I'm recommending for your consideration, some pay rate add-ons for the remainder of the current school year, for both our long-term substitutes, as well as our regular substitutes.
And so this would be a one-time expenditure in fiscal year 22. On, on the screen, the, the pay rates that you see in the first column are the ones that you approved back in June for this fiscal year. The second column is the add-on for the remainder of the year that Dr. Lockard's recommending. So basically, a thirty-dollar per day add-on for all substitutes, except for long-term substitutes in the extended assignment, and that would be a fifty-dollar per day add-on. Based on substitute usage so far in the year, Mr. Hartlove and Mr. Diaz have collaborated to, to make an estimate of up to seven hundred thousand dollars for this expenditure. Again, a one-time expenditure to be covered at, at the end of this fiscal year. And as Dr. Lockard said, we're hopeful that this will do a couple of things, attract more and additional substitutes, but help us retain the folks who are serving in those roles for us for the remainder of the year.
Board members, any questions? Donna, um, Ms. Savigny, I got to learn this.
That's all right. So I don't know, you had said that this would have to come out of fund balance at the end of the year. These are dollars that could potentially be used to go towards the federally funded dollars for COVID, but those are, we already have those spoken for, right?
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Hartlove would be happy with me if I said, we have, we have already planned or programmed all of the federal funds, and, and at this point, mostly that's for summer this year, summer next year, and the two ELO opportunities during the spring, and fall and spring each year. But we have to wait to see what we realize in actual expenditures. And so if, if we, if we come in in a favorable way in any of those programs where there's additional federal money then remaining, we could apply that. we could apply that here at that time.
So, so fund balance would be the last resort?
Yeah, also year-end transfers within your own operating budget's another option as well. So there's money budgeted for substitutes that's clearly not all being used at the moment. So there's, you know, that's an estimate for cost in the first place. And then secondly, some of that may be covered in other, other ways as well. But if all else fails, you have the, the, the comfort of your fund balance. And Chris had just reported on that at the work session. It's in a healthy state. I, I know we're going to it for a few things, but, uh, we, we should be okay to cover this if needed.
And that, that's where I was gonna go next, was I know, um, Mr. Hartlove did say that we're in a healthy fund balance position during that work session. But I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, that we, we, we've said on multiple occasions now that, okay, well, we'll use fund balance for this. So I just wanna kind of keep it in our minds, like kind of a running total of what we think we've committed to, to fund balance at this point. So I know, so there's this potential item, there were bonuses to the bus drivers and assistants.
Correct.
Are there other things, Mr. Hartlove, that we've committed?
I'm sorry, yeah, I got sneaky there. What I would say with, with this is, uh, Mr. O'Neal makes a good point. I mean, the first thing we're gonna look at is transfers. So we typically, at the end of the fiscal year, I mean, by law, we have to spend less than our budget. You know, we can, well, actually, we can spend right up to our budget, but that's, that's impossible. So you always have money left at the end. The category for most of our subs is instruction. It's the largest category we have. Then the second largest is special ed, and that's where some of these subs would be in special ed as well. Those two categories, this is not a huge percentage of the category. So it's quite possible that this could just be absorbed in the normal budget that we have already, we've already issued. If not, at the end, when we get to the end, if we've utilized everything we can through transfers, then we would go to fund balance. But, you know, if we get to the end of the year, the last few years we've had, you know, two, three million dollars left, which is, that's a, that's less than one percent of the budget, but it's a large dollar figure. All the items that we've, we've put out so far don't add up to that. So it's possible that we won't touch any fund balance, that we would just be doing it within transfers. But we put that out there because we don't wanna surprise anybody. So if we do the transfers and we're, if we come up a little short, we have to go to fund balance.
Okay.
So it, so fund balance should be a kind of a last resort.
Well, I think the, the discussion of fund balance will probably come up repeatedly over the course of the year. So I'd just like to make sure we kind of keep in our minds, like, okay, how much have we potentially committed?
Right.
To fund balance already, like with each one of these decisions that we make, so.
And, and it's, it's a good question, and, and, um, I, this is, I feel like a perfect use for fund balance, because it's one-time in nature. And that's, the dollars are one-time in nature, and the expense is one-time in nature, so it lines up nicely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion items, uh, Community Advisory Council. I was given this note, but I'm not sure it's correct. The Community Advisory Council was scheduled to meet on December 2nd. Based on the fact that the Board of Education decided to discuss the assignments for the council tonight, the council meeting was rescheduled for January 20th. Now, we're, we're not looking at, at people on the council. We're looking at coming up with some suggestions on things they should do, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay. And, and I don't know if we planned to do it, but some of us plan to do it.
Well, I had a couple of things written down. Couple of CAC members had reached out to me, uh, in between. So a couple of the ideas that they had, um, were discussing was the potential of a mass survey, a mask survey for their individual school community. And it would not be online, it would be an actual physical paper that they would take home, kind of like permission slip. Student, the parent would fill it out, put the student's name, and send it back, um, with their student, just like a permission slip, teacher would check it off, and it will go to the principal, and it'd be tallied from that. The reason why, and this is what I, I understand from the parent, is because, you know, we do hear so much about the mask mandates, and it would be nice to actually get a pulse from the community, from each individual school. Because you might have one school who, their community is for the mask mandates, and you might have another school who is against the mask mandates. So the idea from the parent was, you know, just to get a pulse from the actual community. Again, mask, yes or no, Jimmy Johnson's name, sent back to the school, and that's it. And it's checked off. And it, and she did say that she did not think one line would be the best avenue, because a lot of times those things can get shared out on social media, and you're gonna get responses back that really do not have anything to do with the actual school community. The second topic, um, was because we have been hearing a lot regarding sexual explicit material fiction books in our schools, and how they, the CAC members could go about helping with that in that magnitude, whether it be some type of, uh, library committee for each individual school. They reevaluate a couple of things, um, just kind of like go through things. So they, they just wanna get a pulse on that, too.
Okay, but we already have a reconsideration committee for the county.
But from what I understood from that, that was if they didn't like something, it was sent to that to be reevaluated. This, this was more of a, just making sure everything is right. And then, and then if they do find something, that they can submit it. Because right now, we have, it's this here and there once in a while, but it's just to make sure that everything is, is, is a good set for our schools. That we, we do have parents involved in that in the actual school libraries. Because that's something we don't have, that we have parents on the curriculum council, but we don't have parents like, as far as like evaluating material in the libraries. And that was just the suggestion, too.
That was something that the CAC suggested.
That was, you know, just discussions I had heard.
Now, is, is, uh, are these two items something that, A, that council has the abilities to do? And B, isn't a duplicate or, or crossover? And, and again, lastly, do we think it's a good idea?
I, I, I think, I'm sorry, I had a brief conversation.
Could you repeat the second, um, suggestion that you had, Ms. Pataglia?
The library, like a library committee almost for each individual school.
Okay, and what would the purpose of that be?
To make sure that material is not inappropriate, that there isn't excessive sexual explicit content, just to kind of re-evaluate fictional material if something could be questionable.
And, and they wouldn't have the ability to do anything about it. They would, if they saw something.
With the reconsideration committee, yes, they would just submit it to the reconsideration committee.
But don't the media specialists have their own?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's a, a set of criteria, criteria that our library media specialists use to select for their collections.
Right.
At the schools. Perhaps, y- y- you know, there's a, a conversation at CNI, or maybe you already had that, about the process that's, that's used.
Right, and board members, I, don't we have a process in place already for, uh, for reconsidering something that's already there? Because you, you, you need to follow that process. I think you already have it, don't you?
And that's, and that's what I just said, is this group couldn't do anything about it, they'd have to submit it to that committee.
Right, right.
And maybe, wait, wait, Dr. Locker, what you just said, maybe you start out by, maybe CAC ought to have somebody from the librarian side come give them a presentation on what currently is going on.
Sure.
Maybe start there.
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
Right, and Ms. Pataglia, I don't think you were talking about the, the reconsider-, I, I don't think you were talking about recreating the re- it sounded like you were talking about identification.
Yes.
Of material, potential identification of materials to send to the reconsideration committee.
If there was something.
Yes.
To prove, even potentially prevent that. Because we have seen, well, that's the thing, we have seen a lot going, okay, I'm questioning this book. And it, it's, it's new material in the school. I mean, I, uh, parents, parents wanna be involved, and, you know, they're, they're kind of, they're not getting a good pulse right now, because when they question something, they're knocked down. And parents are getting very frustrated by that right now.
I, I like that suggestion, though, of having one of the, the library specialists, though, come to the, the CAC.
Tell them what the system is.
Talk about it, because I think one of the things is that, that it just, it feels a little less transparent than the curriculum council. Like, since we have the curriculum council, we have the family life council, where like, we, we look at, those committees look at the resources and get to make comments about them and approve them or not approve them. It comes to the board, for the board to approve or not approve them. But the library resources is on a completely different path that feels a lot less transparent. Is that the issue that you're trying to get at?
Yes. And bullying policy was something that was brought up, too, um, that they had a lot of questions on. One more thing I had heard, and I had actually brought up when we were discussing the, the politically neutral, neutral classroom, was the documents that a lot of teachers are giving our students to fill out at the beginning of the school year or second semester. What's your name? The biggest thing I've heard is, are they, teachers permitted to ask what pronouns are? And are they permitted to ask our students if they're vaccinated or not? That was something else that I had heard.
Okay. Right, we're not asking students about their vaccination status, as far, as far as I'm aware. I also think pronoun, um, sorry. I think pronoun is personally identify, or is private or confidential information. I, I certainly think that can be provided by the student or family, um, to the teacher. I don't know if Mr. Osmar or Mr. McCabe wanna comment on that. But, um, those are two topics where I don't know that we're, we're, we're required to be asking of students, what is your, um, you know, response to these, these questions?
Again, that's something, you know, there's the, we're hearing from, I was hearing from some of the CAC parents, is, you know, look, this is confidential information, just like you said, Dr. Lockhart. You know, why are certain teachers asking these things? Number one, not every student feel comfortable with a pronoun. Number two, vaccine status, that's violation of HIPAA. So if teachers are asking these things in each individual classes, it's a problem.
And, and I understand everything that's going on. I had a middle school girl come to me and say, they asked me what my pronoun was, and they said, do you want "they?", and she said, I looked at him and said, "they" is plural, it's only one of me. So, um, the kids kind of don't understand it, and hopefully they don't.
Right, so we do not have teachers asking about students' vaccination status. If that's happening, we certainly need to know about that, because that should not be happening. As far as the pronouns go, um, we worked with, um, Mr. Omeili on that in the beginning of the school year, to ensure that if a student felt that they wanted to be, um, referred to by a different pronoun, that they could go to the teacher and let the teacher know, but that we weren't including that, um, question necessarily in our surveys or other kinds of things that went out to students. Okay, and I think maybe those things need, and that's something else, you know, I, I do hear from the parents, is, you know, are these things permitted to be asked? You know, is this a board policy? Is this something that it's just the principals are doing, you know? Again, it just kind of goes along with, the parents wanna make sure and know.
Right.
What can and cannot be done.
Ms. Osmar?
I do hate to say this, but, um, I know a middle school did ask it in, in a class verbally, out in front of everybody, and, uh, saw it on paper. So, uh, those things just, those educators need to be addressed. And I, I know it's a new thing, and they just, you just need to, the principals just need to en- enforce it. And, you know, I, and, and let them, you know, just remind teachers that, you know, that's not allowed. And especially verbally.
Right.
In front of the whole class.
Right.
And, and I saw it on a written piece of paper. And, you know, if, they just need to be reminded, that's, that's not appropriate, and we're, and we can't do that.
Right, it, it came to our attention.
Right.
Once it started happening this, this fall.
It rolled.
Yeah, so, so we addressed it once, once we.
Right.
Were informed that it was happening in certain places.
And I didn't go, I didn't call and go crazy either. I, I, I knew you guys would handle it, but that's, you know, it, it kind of rolled into a pretty big thing there at the beginning. And thanks for handling it.
We certainly wanna be supportive of our students. And, and certainly responsive to requests and, and their considerations, for sure. Uh, but I appreciate Ms. McCabe explaining that. Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, and, and good topics, but we're on CAC.
It is. Those are things that we're, I've been hearing.
What, what, what assignments do we wanna give them? And we've been lax in giving them stuff. We really need to give them something. So, um, do you wanna tell them it's gonna be arranged to have somebody from the librarian side give them a presentation?
Yep.
And then, are they capable of doing a mass survey per school? Sounds like a, it can't hurt.
Carrie?
Or is that, or is that something that's cumbersome?
I don't really understand how that would be done by CAC.
That, that was just one of the, the things I had heard. They, they wanna get a pulse of what their actual school communities are, are feeling.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, the, the thing that I worry about, though, is confidentiality from, from that perspective. Like, they wouldn't be able to be tallying anything or seeing anything. So they would be basically just get the result from the principal, right?
Yeah. And I don't know how.
I mean, they, they could certainly discuss the results at the school level, at the CAC, right?
Well, we certainly have one, one significant topic, and then there'll be several board meetings in between before the.
Right, and they had expressed interest in having Mr. Anderson come and talk about curriculum.
Yes.
Development of curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are we good with that? Any other unfinished business or new business?
He forgets to look this way, I know. Just one thing, I've heard from some.
My first meeting isn't gonna be longer than any of yours, okay? Just.
Okay.
We're dragging it out.
I've, I've heard from educators, I've heard from alumni. I don't know if you all realize, and I know some of you do, that I know the Carrington Tech's 50 years old this year. Some people wanted to know if they were gonna, uh, you know, they've suggested things to me. I'm not in charge. Some of them wanted to open house in the spring, you know, for a couple hours and invite alumni. Uh, I don't know what's going on, but I'm putting it out there that it, we need to recognize that 50 years that it's been open. So, and it does such a great job for the students that we have, and they get national recognition, and, um, I don't know who to talk to about that, but it, it, we need a, we need something.
Well, you've said it, and certainly Mr. King, Mr. Echols, um, we can, we can begin to look at the appropriate way to recognize 50 years and sort of a, a great time to do that as it's undergoing a huge transformation into the next phase.
And it'd be a, something positive for Carroll County, because that is a gem.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I thought you wanted to bring up the bullying policy.
Yes, I do. As I stated earlier in the meeting, I'd like to bring back to the board a overview of the existing. And I think the state, uh, just, just this week, uh, updated their bully and harassment, uh, policy. So I think that's an appropriate time to bring, um, updated information from the state, and then have some conversation around what we've been hearing, and how can we improve upon what currently exists as it relates to either new or different, uh, po- policy and reg to add on to what we already have.
I was gonna say, absolutely, I definitely need to, to look at that. You know, I think I've talked to you before about possible, like, some type of public service announcement, you know, video that we can do, kind of like the Dear Future Me, something where, you know, us, we, you know, us, as adults, you know, we remember going through stuff like that, not to the magnitude that it's probably is today, but we remember it. And, um, you know, definitely getting, um, sources of strength back on, you know. Talked with Mr., Ms. Gramada about, you know, getting that, yeah, COVID has put a damper on a lot of stuff. We had to put a foot down a little bit to stop stuff, but I definitely think in guest, getting the SOS back up.
Yep.
Getting all those things.
So we will work with our, um, So we will work with our board president and vice president during the agenda settings, and, and see where we can best fit that in the next couple, couple meetings, sooner rather than later.
Dr. Lockhart, is there some way to couple that, maybe, with something for what the CAC could do? I mean, I know we've got the behavioral statistics and pillar four.
Yeah.
That we just saw as, as part of the update this month, is, is a lot of that, is any of that tied to bullying? What, is, how, how successful is sources of strength, and are there additional ideas in the county to, to reduce bullying? You know, kind of have CAC help us in, in that analysis and that discussion of revising the, the bullying policy?
Well, yeah, I think CAC could certainly provide input. I think we'd also then need to have some kind of agenda item with CAC to kind of go over what we're going over with the board, to get everybody knowledgeable. We can always have a conversation with them. But I almost think we need to have that conversation here at a, at a broader level, and then take some of the ideas or suggestions to CAC, solicit additional input, bring that back to the board as well.
Okay, so it would start, it would start with us, and we could, we could get them involved, right?
Vanji?
And to carry on that conversation about bullying and harassment, and we definitely should look at the policy and all, but I really do think we really need to look beyond the policy and regs, look beyond the data and what's on paper right now, because we do have a no tolerance policy that's already on paper, written down. It's what it's like actually being in the school, how students are acting with the school culture, is that needs to be changed. And to be honest, I really don't think that can be done by solely looking at data. As we've said, I really do think we need to turn those numbers into names, that's been said a lot before. And I, we really need to pursue a campaign centrally throughout the entire system that focuses on anti-bullying and anti-harassment, and whether that's incorporating that into individual lessons, incorporating that into instruction, different clubs, but I really do think it needs to be system-wide and all pervading, and not just one action here, one action there, this, something that is being done by one club. I really do think that needs to be a centrally sort of campaign that's undertaken by the board and central office.
That's a great point. I think that's what Ms. Pataglia was sort of alluding to in some of her comments as well. Thank you, Vanji.
It, it needs to be a community effort, because you can't just, I mean, as we were hearing from some of the, the people that spoke today, you see a lot of it online, adults. Even people that were just sitting right here were bullying online while we were sitting here. So what does that say? Like, I mean, we can't do anything unless the community is absolutely involved in this and stopping it. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's got to be the big thing.
And I do think it really does have to do with the increased polarization and sort of the climate that we're in right now. But I think that addressing it in the schools will also help us address it in the community as well.
Donna?
Totally different subject, outdoor school. I know that we're still in a day program situation for outdoor school, and was just, I know that we had said that we were going to try to get back to normal as soon as we could get the staffing levels back to where they needed to be, and I was, I, I know that there are a lot of parents out there, and outdoor school is such an integral part of our, our middle school curriculum, and I just, you know, the, the kids just aren't getting the experience that, that they should be getting.
Right. Our hope was to have the, the overnight portion of it restarted in January, late December, January. We had, we, when we made that decision, we were down to nurses, and we were interviewing for nurses. We had filled all of the open positions and felt like we were in a good place, and since then, we've lost two more nurses. So we have to restart the interview process, which we are going to do. And so we hope that as soon as we get our staffing back up to having everything filled, we will be able to start overnight. I'm just not confident setting a date to do that yet until we have those, we have all of our nursing positions filled.
Okay. Is there any chance that that can happen in January?
I think we will be probably, you know, interviewing as soon as we can, and, you know, I just don't know how quickly we'll be able to get people hired. But we're going to do it as quickly as we possibly can, because we want to get things up and running and, and back to, you know, normal there as, as soon as possible.
Right. Thanks.
Have nurses.
Okay, anything else? At 4:00 PM on January 6, 2022, there'd be a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners in Room 003, 225 North Center Street. At 5:00 PM on Wednesday, January 12, there'd be a board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. Anything else? A motion to adjourn.
Is room 003, is that the conference room area where they have citizen participation with their meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Reagan Boardroom or something like that?
Yeah.
The Reagan Boardroom, okay, great, thanks.
Reagan Room, that's right.
Yes, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
I'm back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.